All right. Finally, the six o'clock hour has arrived. Will you all please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. So it is April 23rd, 6:00 PM. This is the Cedar Woolley City Council meeting. We have, I'm going to call it to order. I will take real call now. Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond?
Present.
Councilman Henderson?
Here.
Councilman Cock?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca?
Here.
Great. Thank you. Now looking for approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilman Cock. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Moving on, it passes. So moving on to the consent agenda. Item E, items one through five. I am looking for an approval.
Madam Mayor, I'll make an approval for the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right. So tonight we have, we're very fortunate. First off, I want to say, I see some of the planning commissioner here. I think online as well as in the audience, I want to thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you. And we have some special guests. You all have been very instrumental in providing funding that has done some really good work within the community. And so tonight, especially as we enter into the discussion regarding the different fundings that we have coming in, the opioid 1406 and 1590, I thought it might be really great to hear about the success stories that we've had. We are fortunate in that we get to hear them quite often. So I thought it's time that you had the chance to hear that too. So we have three speakers. We have, first up, I'm going to change up the order here a bit. First up will be Community Court Judge Styles. And then the First Steps and Friendship House Jonathan Klein. And then our No Star Director Monica Negrilia. So those who, you can ask questions afterwards if you like. But that's going to be the order. So with that, I'm going to call up Judge Styles.
Okay. Good evening. I need to learn how to push on the button here, like I tell everybody every week. Anyway, my name's Brock Styles. I'm the judge here for Cedar Woolley. Been doing this now since, I think, July of 2015. So it'll be 10 years coming up here this summer. So just think it's an honor to be able to serve Cedar Woolley as the judge. And I'm here really with a good story in regards to court. A lot of times you don't hear good stories come out of court. You just hear about people or what they're doing. And they're sentenced and they're either sent to jail or they're sent off to, you know, with a big fine or whatever it is. A lot of times it's not a good story. But there's a lot of success stories also coming out of the court systems here in Skagit County and particularly here in Cedar Woolley. So if you don't know the history of this, so Community Court was started in, I believe it was January of 2020. So if you think back to January of 2020, about two months later, basically everything closed down because of COVID. So not the greatest time to be able to start a brand new program. But Community Court, I think in the state of Washington initially started over in Spokane. They had some success over there. I believe it's, there was another jurisdiction here in Western Washington that started it. But Skagit County really kind of spearheaded it through Skagit County District Court. And Judge Housen there, Jennifer Housen, basically started in Community Court and also gathered the other court systems in the county, being the municipal courts, to go along with the district courts. And just so you know, the district courts and the municipal courts deal with misdemeanor and gross misdemeanor type cases. So we're not dealing with felonies or anything like that. But it was decided at that point that Community Court would be started. And of course, Judge Housen was instrumental in getting significant grants to be able to fund this program. And it was really a coordination with the probation office and the court systems to be able to operate this Community Court. And so what it is, it is a deferral type of a program where if people want to go into the Community Court, they have an ability to do that. It's voluntary on their part. The prosecutor has a chance to veto the who goes into it. But it's a deferral where the defendants are agreeing that there's certain things that they have to do. And if they successfully complete that at the end of whatever the term is, it could be six months, it could be two years, whatever the period is, the case has really continued for them to be able to successfully complete the terms of this, of the Community Court. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about that. But it's quite a bit different than the traditional court system. Traditional criminal courts basically were obviously here to protect the defendant's rights to an attorney and the right to trial and all those various things. And they certainly have a right to do that. But the end game is either the case is dismissed or there's some type of a negotiation. And then there's, if there's a guilty plea to something, there's a sentence. And the sentence was really limited to, there was jail time, there was fines, and there may be some other conditions such as treatment and a variety of other things. But that was pretty much it. And then probation, maybe look after these type of, for the cases over the period of time. But the Community Court again is different in that it can defer out the sentencing and it gives people the chance to do similar type things, but not necessarily just jail or fines. It's really to obtain either treatment, you know, do anger management, try to get a driver's license back and a variety of things. And so that's what's different with Community Court. And so a typical case is a person would come in, they're charged with a crime of some type. Not everybody is allowed to enter the program. I'll get into that in just a minute. But one of the things that I think everybody probably knows, there's really five factors as to what takes place where people are brought into the criminal justice system. And these were some of the barriers or some of the factors that are pretty consistent throughout. And you can see that, you know, substance use is one. Mental illness is another. Lack of a driver's license is one. Homelessness is another. And unemployment is the other. So as you can see, if somebody has a substance use disorder of some type, they're probably more likely to maybe be charged with some type of a substance use crime. It could be just possession of controlled substances. One of the larger types or the majority of crimes that are coming in here that potentially go into Community Court is because they're in possession of some type of illegal drug. And so we're basically trying to figure out, how do we address these different barriers that people have that bring them into the court system? But if we can go back to the last, the other slide again. So, you know, a lack of a driver's license, anytime somebody doesn't have a license and they're pulled over, they're going to get a driving license suspended ticket or something like that. So that brings them into the court system. So again, Community Court is trying to figure out, well, how do we get a driver's license back for these people that otherwise are going to be in this vicious cycle of their, you know, we're a driving society to get to work, to get to school, whatever. And if they don't have a license, they're going to likely be brought into the justice system at some point. And then homelessness, that can lead to criminal trespass. So if they don't have any place to go, they may end up someplace where maybe they're not supposed to be and now they're prodded into the criminal justice system. So the type of charges that people can enter into Community Court are, next slide please, are again possession of controlled substance, driving license suspended charges, theft in the third degree, criminal trespass, disorderly conduct, and assault in the fourth degree. And the parentheses there that says non-domestic violence. So any crime that has been designated as a domestic violent crime, and that's typically anything where it involves people that have a relationship with each other, family members, so forth, they're not going to be able to be eligible for Community Court. And the cases, other cases that you're not eligible for Community Court are if you have a past history of violent offenses, felonies, anything like that. That's a deal killer to get into Community Court. Driving while under the influence, domestic violence type cases. So we're really looking at maybe what you would determine to be lower level type charges, which again are either gross or just straight misdemeanor cases. But, so there is some level to be eligible for this and there's some that you're not going to be able to get into Community Court depending on the crime. Like I said earlier though, the prosecuting attorney is going to have veto power on any of these cases. So if there's, you know, if he doesn't think that the person's going to be successful, he would be able to veto somebody getting into Community Court. Now it is again a voluntary program. The defendants are going to have their right to an attorney and get advice as to whether they can get into the program or not. And if they are interested in doing this, again, the result could be that they get the case dismissed. So that could be, it's a very big incentive for somebody to try to be successful in this program. But there is what's called a risk and needs assessment that's done again by the probation officer, office through Skagit County. So, I mean, I can't stress enough how important their job is and they're doing a fantastic job of being able to, one, do the risk and needs assessments. And again, what they're looking at are those things I talked about earlier, the barriers that people are brought into the criminal justice system, whether it be, whether they're homeless, whether they don't have a driver's license, whether they need substance use or mental health treatment and possibly even educational opportunities over at the college and various things like that. So they're trying to again, address these situations where it's basically an unstable situation that the person's in that brings them into the criminal justice system. So what the probation officers are really doing is, which is not typically available in the traditional criminal justice system where they're sentenced to something, they're really working hand in hand with their probation officers to get things done. And I'm just happy to report that it's working out really well. And I'll show you the statistics that we're seeing in regards to the cases in Cedar Woolley. But next slide please. I just want to point out one thing that's relatively new. This is straight out of the possession of controlled substance statute. And if you recall, about two or three years ago, the Supreme Court of Washington had basically found the previous statute for controlled substance to be unconstitutional. And so there was a gap where there really wasn't a criminal statute that dealt with controlled substances until this one came out about a year or so ago. And again, possession of controlled substance is just basically knowingly being in possession of a substance that you're not supposed to have. And in that statute, it actually has this provision that talks about that they kind of put the burden on the law enforcement, which is probably limited to maybe some of the larger counties. But basically the legislature was going to encourage that people be placed into referrals for assessment and services for the controlled substance problem that they're having. And so in Cedar Woolley, what's actually happening is the cases that are being charged, and there are a number of controlled substance cases coming through the system here, especially the last six months, is a lot of the folks are being referred to the Community Court to be able, for the probation officers, to get them to referral for assessment and services to deal directly with the addiction that they have that led to this particular charge. And so just so you know that that's how Cedar Woolley is handling that. And it's again, it's the prosecutor is basically following this statute of trying to encourage people directly into the assessment as fast as they can rather than waiting for a sentencing that could happen, you know, a year down the road. So anyway, that's one. And just so you know, I mean, we're seeing quite a few of these type of charges coming through Cedar Woolley here lately. And they're addressing it by getting into, people into treatment as fast as they can. So, all right. Well, here's the really good news is, next slide please. So out of 101 cases that Cedar Woolley have had gone through Community Court so far, there's only been eight revocations. So that's a 92% at least success rate so far. That's not to say that everybody that's in the system is going to finish. So that number may come down and it probably will because out of the active cases, the compliance rate is really at 86%. And so these are folks that are going into the Community Court. They're buying into the system on getting the things that they've been deemed to have problems. And so 86, that's just their in compliance right now. That doesn't necessarily mean that they've graduated yet. But there's currently, next slide if we can have that, is this basically just indicates, again, back to these barriers that I've talked about. The way that the different types of needs have been brought out, those are the numbers. So the largest number of people in Community Court are getting the substance use treatment. And then the next is mental health and then you can see driver's license. Moral recognition therapy is really anger management classes. You know, they're also being helped with housing and employment and other things as well. So that's what the risk and needs assessments are finding out. And it's basically top heavy with substance use and mental health treatment, which we probably all know that that's one of the major reasons for people being in the criminal justice system in the first place. But anyway, next slide please. So this is just this kind of a grid that the probation officers put together. And you can see in the middle there where it talks about the needs. And so that's the SUD treatment and mental health in the, right in the middle. You can see all the, most of the cases have a combination, some of them even both of those together, that people are participating in there. And the green part is meaning they're all in compliance at this point. But let's turn to the next slide. So the bad news about it is there's some that are in yellow, which means they're currently not in compliance. And there's in the red section or pink, those folks have kind of dropped off out of the system altogether. So they're actually in warrant status. So what's going to happen to them if we do, if they are taken into custody again, they'll, may or may not be given another chance to try to get back on track. Likely they'll probably be revoked at some point. And so that'll mess up our numbers a bit. But I think the number of green that we have up there kind of outweighs that. The people in yellow, and that's really not unusual. There's always a handful of folks that are in Community Court that they fall off for some reason and then they get brought back into the system. And a lot of those people, even though they're in yellow right now, are going to probably end up graduating anyway. But you can also see that in that section there is, almost every single one of them are doing substance use treatment. And so that's, just to be honest, that's kind of a hard nut to crack sometimes when people are having a substance use. It's, they have relapses and so forth. And that's sometimes what's happens. If they'll have a relapse, they'll kind of lose contact and then the probation officers will get ahold of them again. And we've got a lot of stories where people have kind of gotten back on track again. But so it's not unusual for folks to get off of, out of compliance in situations like that. So, okay. Let's see what our next slide is. So, okay. The other thing that we're kind of tracking is whether people going through the Community Court, whether, how much we see as far as that they reoffend for something. Because again, we're trying to eliminate some of these barriers. And so 23% is actually a fairly good rate for this type of situation. I mean, I've read some studies for other court systems and on the federal level is that the reoffense rates can be as high as 60-some percent. So currently at 23%, I think we're doing pretty good on that because that's the other goal for all of this. If we're, if we're spending the time to try to eliminate the barriers or bring them into the criminal justice system, hopefully those barriers will get removed or at least they'll be stabilized to the point that they don't come back into the system. So, so again, I'm almost done here. And really, you know, if you ever come across the probation office, you know, stop by over there and see them in action because they're there. They'll probably be happy to see you. One of the things when people go into the Community Court program, one of the first things they'll do, usually the next day after court, is they have to go to what's called the resource clinic, which is where they'll sit down, see what the resources are available for the things that they have to do. And that's usually a pretty good sign when they, when the defendants show up for those, that initial meeting is that they'll be on a good, good track. So anyway, a couple of stories I do want to share with you. This is getting a little bit more personal here is, so this one gentleman, I'm going to call him Isaac. And there was a time, so he had a substance use addiction. And, you know, he was, he was in compliance. And then one of the court days, I can remember sitting right up there and he didn't show up and nobody knew where he was. And then there was some indication that somebody had gotten, that they had seen here or they had reported that this car was abandoned alongside the freeway somewhere. So pretty much everybody thought that at this point we had just lost him altogether. But, you know, after a couple of relapses and everything, he graduated. Last year, he has not reoffended. He was able to get, I think, housing. But the main thing was that he had the support for the treatment and he's been on a good course ever since that time. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a person graduate. We'll call him Kevin. And this guy had not had a driver's license for 10 years. Okay. Can you imagine driving around? And so his record was long, constantly going in and out of court. So Community Court was able to get him hooked up with appropriate treatment. He's been clean and sober for the last year. And he's actually now, I think, has a child on the way and he's out putting the resumes out to be able to find employment. And he's kind of out of that system, at least hopefully for now. And I think he, I mean it, he meant a lot to him to graduate from here last week. And then just another side note, there was one girl, her name was Maria, and she was just about 20, had no direction going anywhere. She's brought into court on a theft charge, goes through the probation and through Community Court. And it's now, I think she's up at Skagit Valley College with some classes. And I always make a point to ask the defendants when they graduate as to what it all meant to them. And she just said it was really the first time in her life that anybody's actually listened to her. Okay. So that's what the probation officers really have a connection with these folks. And that explains probably why we have such a great success rate. So there's your invitation, every first and third Thursdays. And that means everybody in the courtroom, too, can come into court. We're here at 9:30 in the morning. We start at 8:30, but Community Court starts at 9:30. If you want to see Community Court in action, you're more than welcome. So that's my Community Court. I do want to throw a couple of other pitches out here just to thank the council for all the support for the municipal court here. And so the support for the Community Court, I know what is being paid for this, I think is money very well spent for the results that we're getting. And, but I also want to thank the council for approving part-time court clerk. So the reason that's important is that, you know, our current clerk is probably going to be retiring here in about three or four years or so. And to be able to, for small courts like us, to be able to find a full-time clerk is nearly impossible unless we get somebody from another court because you're not able to train somebody. This is a specialized type of a job that somebody has to have and they have to have somebody be able to, you know, you can't just learn on the job. You have to do it. So the part-time clerk, whether it be the current part-time clerk will take over or we have another clerk from somebody else that's maybe part-time, that's really going to be helpful on eliminating a lot of problems when our current clerk retires. So plus it really helps out that we can keep the clerk's office open for other business while the other clerk is in the courtroom on Thursday. So, and it'll help out during trial dates and things like that. So I really appreciate that. We also have security now that we didn't have before. In the past, we usually had police officers come and take their time in court. So this, supporting the security officers provides, lets the officers be out on the streets. And the other thing I just want to tell everybody about as well is that in the past, we all, if we had somebody in custody on a Cedar Woolley case that needed to come to court, we had to have police officers go over and pick them up and spend, you know, several hours to be able to bring them over and back again. So we've eliminated that by working with the Justice Center so that they allow us, every Wednesday from, beginning at 1:30, we have an in-custody Zoom hearing. So that saves everybody money all the way around. So anyway, appreciate that. I think I took way too much time, but anyway. Any questions?
Go ahead. Councilman Lavaca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, Judge Styles. We really appreciate all you guys do and what you're doing for this community. And it is money well spent and that's for sure. I think we all voted on that unanimously because of the importance. One thing I was going to ask you about, obviously a lot of these have to do with substance use. And hopefully we see a reduction in that. But we've actually seen an explosion of fentanyl use in our community in Skagit County. The people that are going through the program and graduating, is there any reaching out to employers or trying to help them with being able to get into a job so that they don't find themselves into a difficult stressful situation, pulling them back into where they were?
You know, I think the probation officers are looking for everything. And, you know, they may help out with, you know, resume applications or getting people pointed in the right direction to try to get employment. It's usually not a requirement that they have to get employment to be able to successfully go to graduation on this. But I think they really try to help out where they can. And that's again, where this dismissal at the end of this might have more to do with a person being, get a job as opposed to traditional court if they're found guilty of that or plead guilty to it. It's going to be on the record and then that could really eliminate their chances for employment.
And it might be helpful actually to add too. In Community Court, all the services are here. So when people come in, they have the opportunity to be connected right away.
Yeah. There is, I think Evergreen Treatment Facilities do have a person here actually in court. So if, when a person does a risk and needs assessment, if they do it here in court, they also can meet with somebody as far as getting an evaluation set up right away. But again, I'll pass that on to the probation officers to see how much they facilitate, you know, people seeking employment, you know, after they've completed treatment. Because again, that's again, one of the barriers that may bring them back into court if they don't have a stable job. So appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much again.
Okay.
Councilman Cock?
Yes. I simply wanted to thank you, Judge Styles, for coming here and describing this innovative and I think excellent program. I imagine too, that in terms of recidivism, that you may not have data on it, that it also sort of offsets somebody going to more serious crimes, if you can sort of catch them at the beginning.
Oh, no question. So, I mean, the perfect Community Court folks are the ones that maybe are the first time that they're in. And it's not, they don't have decades worth of cases in and out of the criminal justice system. So that's, so I'll see if the probation officers can kind of track that as well to see if, you know, because that's one of the goals of this, is to eliminate barriers and try to prevent people from staying in the criminal justice system for a long period. So, great. Thank you.
Go ahead. Councilman Burns?
Thank you, Judge Styles, for coming today and the program that you're helping run here. I really appreciate it. And I think that it's great to catch people at the beginning of being charged with a crime and trying to make it so that we keep it from reoccurring and getting them the help that they need. So I was curious, if it's a drug-related crime, what kind of treatment is required for them to graduate from the program?
Well, first off, it's the, the evaluation that is done to have an expert be able to make the decision and evaluate exactly what type of treatment the person needs, what the addiction level is and so forth. So we kind of leave it up to the experts to give us their reports to say exactly what type of treatment they need, the length of the treatment. You know, sometimes it could be the recommend inpatient treatment where the person has to go someplace for a, for a period of time and then come back and, you know, and do the, the regular, you know, sessions on a regular basis for a period of time, too. So yeah, we leave it up to the experts to tell us exactly what the extent of the treatment and the type of treatment it is.
And that's all provided within the confines of this court system, is that correct?
Well, through the, I mean, the probation officers are the ones monitoring the diversion conditions, which is, so we're just, the court's just continuing the case out. Probation officers are making sure that they meet the criteria for this and they're reporting on a regular basis. So, you know, the defendants do come back into court regularly for just a status. And we get a report from the probation officer. So the probation officers are ones that are monitoring this as it goes. So.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add one more thing. So way back in 2020, when we were approached by Judge Howson, who also happens to be part of the North Star advocacy group, you and I both commented, didn't we, that we thought this will never work, this will never work. But we moved forward with it on faith. And I have to say, it's been a very successful program. Thank you for including me on some of the celebrations, the birthdays, when they graduate. And I would invite the council to come and experience that as well. And, you know, one other thing that maybe I think Judge Styles is being a little modest here, he really has some of the greatest successes in the Skagit Valley here, which I think goes to show the compassion and also the efficiency, you know, really making sure that people get, holding them accountable and making sure that they get the services that they need. So thank you very much. You do double duty here, regular court as well as community court. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight, Judge.
Yep.
All right. Second speaker is Jonathan Kline. And I don't know how many of you know Jonathan Kline, but he's also part of First Steps. He oversees First Steps in the Friendship House. And because you have given to First Steps, I did ask that he come and give a report, the successes that they're having and let you know where your money's gone.
Hey, thank you for the invite to come up and chat with you all tonight. My name is Jonathan Kline. I'm the director at Friendship House. I've been there just shy of three years and First Step, I think, has been there about three and a half. So I missed the first six months, but the, the rest of it, I've been there for. So you can go next slide, please. So I'm the director of Friendship House. We do a couple of other things besides First Step that also touch on folks from all around the county. So I'm just going to talk about those real briefly, but then we'll spend the most of the time talking about First Step and kind of what we're doing over there. So we're one of Skagit County's only emergency shelter providers. And that's mostly with a 90-day stay model. We do have two houses that are sober living houses, both in Mount Vernon. We have one that's a women's and children's house that we can house 20 people in. We have another one that's a men's house. We're the only shelter system in Skagit County that has a place that's specifically for men. It's a demographic that just does not get touched by shelter services, even in surrounding counties. They just, they don't seem to exist. But we can do 24 men in that sober living shelter there. We also do Skagit First Step Center that I'll talk more in detail about in a little bit. We also do a transitional housing program, which is people enter into a program where they're able to start paying a small program fee, similar to rent, get back into the habit of paying that rent, establish rental history with us again, work on a mandatory savings component during that time, go through coursework around budgeting and stuff like that, get teamed up with a community mentor that'll come alongside these folks and try to make sure that in the two years they're in that program, they're set up to the point where if we ever see them again, it's just because they're stopping by to say hello and not because they're needing to come back in for, for services again. We do have 12 rooms that we, we rent out for those, for folks that come through our programs that have taken those steps to get a job, to go to their meetings if sobriety is an issue with them and that are really kind of making those strides towards getting back on, on their feet. We also provide services in the community for anyone, whether they're in our program or not, around free showers, free laundry services. And then we have a free store, a donation room. That's also, that's all in our Mount Vernon campus. And that's for anyone in the community that needs it. If they're in our program or if they're in a car, or if they just find themselves a little bit down on their luck, they can come by, get a shower, wash their clothes, pick up some new clothes if they need to. We usually get a lot of great donations, especially around the beginning of the school year for kids' clothes, for folks who are feeling a little stretched going back to school. They can come by, go through that donation room, and it's all free of charge to, to anyone that needs it. We also have a cafe that we run in Mount Vernon that provides meals 365 days a year, free to the general public. We served over 66,000 free meals last year, which is about a 10 to 15 percent, or just shy of 15% increase on a previous year. So we're seeing more and more folks in Skagit County that aren't using our services, but they're just feeling that the squeeze of the, the economy and needing to come in and take advantage of, of having a, a hot dinner provided for them. So we've seen that, that number go up. We also provide in that program, SAC lunch program as well for either folks that are working and need to take something with them to work or for folks that are sending kids to school. They can stop by and pick up those SAC lunches from us daily. And the other thing that we do is connect folks to services. So a lot of what we do at First Step specifically is, much like the name sounds, it's, it's a first step. So we're, we're just getting folks in. A lot of people haven't been into the system yet. The system can be, sometimes it feels like almost unnecessarily complicated. So it's getting folks in that door and then being able to have those conversations with them to connect them to the services that exist that they may not even be aware exist. So people are looking for, you know, who, who can help me with this? And you're like, okay, there's, where are you at? There's three different organizations that do that. So we've got staff that are on there full-time to just walk people through that process. And it, it sometimes is a process that even confuses us at, at the staff level, like who, who does that again? So it's, it's really great to be able to have that service for folks that come through when they're going through a trauma, to be able to kind of walk them through. These are the people that you talk to. This is where you need to go to, to have that conversation. Next slide. First Step is a, is a 90-day program. Like I mentioned, we do First Step Center over in Burlington. It is a program that a lot of the, the county and the cities came together to help start and fund. And I, I know you guys were a part of helping to make sure that, that we have the, the 45 units that we do have over there. We have these 45 tiny houses that are, that you see on the screen there. And it's a, it's a great way to do this rather than doing it as a congregate shelter. It gives people a little more dignity. It gives people a little more space to call their own. It also cuts down on some issues that you have in congregate shelters around theft or people being two on top of each other. So we've been doing that for just shy of four years now. This past year, we saw 546 people come through the First Step Center. That's down a little bit from where we were last year, but that's mostly because we've been seeing people having to stay longer. So we're typically a 90-day program, but our average length of stay in this past year was 110 days. So where that comes from is we do grant extensions for folks around three key areas. And those areas are if someone is, is elderly and on a fixed income, it's just, it's so difficult to get folks into housing that we recognize that's not very likely to happen in a three-month period. No one wants to exit somebody on a, a fixed income back out onto the street. So we do do extensions for, for folks in that situation. We also do extensions for folks that are having health issues. And then we also do extensions for folks that have a house that they're able to show us on paper. I, I do have a lease or an agreement that's starting in three weeks, but I can't get in for another three weeks. It would make absolutely no sense to make someone go homeless again for three weeks to move into their house. So we do grant extensions for those. And we've been seeing more and more folks coming in that, that meet those criteria, especially around the elderly criteria in, in the past year or so. So that's what kind of, two years ago, our average length of stay, to put it in perspective, two years ago, our average length of stay was 80 days. And then this past year, it was 110, just because we're seeing more and more folks that are in, in a vulnerable situation health-wise and, and age-wise and wanting to just kind of make sure that we're providing those services so that we're, we're not having to, to exit them back out until their, their cars are out onto the street. Of those 546 folks, those are just 546 people that came to us through the coordinated entry system, and that's through calling 211, working with the Volunteers of America. We also do take folks to other ways that aren't included in that 546 number. And that's through police drop-offs, as well as through our cold weather winter shelter months. Next slide. Yeah, so most of the time with First Step, like I mentioned earlier, the, the name implies it really is a first step. And the, the end goal is not necessarily that someone is going to come in there and in that 90 days, they're magically going to be housed. Oftentimes, it's 90 days and linking them up with another program where they may go to that program and that may be the program that actually does get them housed or, or helps them get into an Oxford house or something like that. But we do have some success when people come through. We had 64 people that came into our program last year. They were able to move directly from Skagit First Step Center into a house of their own. And that number, I, I always tell folks, is, is almost certainly quite a bit higher than that. Those 64 are 64 that, that I can prove and point to exactly where they went. We don't always know where people go when they leave us. Sometimes people come back and they let us know, hey, I moved into apartment, I'm doing great. But then there's other folks that we don't, we don't know where they go when they leave. So the 64 number is likely quite a bit higher than that. But that's 64 folks that we can confirm have moved directly into housing from that program. We're also able to take people from that program and coordinate them into our other programs. So we're able to get them either into the men's or the women's house over in Mount Vernon or transition them into our transitional houses. And we just had two brothers that came into the shelter this past winter that that was kind of their path. They moved into Skagit County to take a job. They, they both got jobs at the same place. They didn't have the money to get set up an apartment and they were sleeping in a car. A police officer ended up finding them. It was a, a very cold night, suggested that they come in through the cold weather shelter program, through a, through a police drop-off. They were able to come in through there, eventually get into one of the cabins in the 90-day program. And then from there, staff there were so impressed with the work that they were doing and, and the fact that they really kind of took on a, a leadership role with, within the, the community at First Step themselves and recommended that the brothers then go into the transitional housing program where they're at right now. And they'll be able to be there for the next two years, save up that money, get established and help get back on their feet. So it's a great thing when, when it works out like that. It doesn't always work out like that. The transitional program, we only have 12 rooms. So we're, we're definitely limited and there's a waitlist to get in on that. But when it does, it's a, it's a beautiful thing. Some of the other stuff that we try to do is just connect folks with, with other services that where they can go at the end of our 90 days, whether that's with New Earth Recovery, which is a faith-based recovery program that operates in Mount Vernon. They do a lot of great work there. So we're often able to make referrals to Alan and his staff there of, you know, hey, we think these people would be a great fit for your program, or connect them with, with others like Community Action, Anacortes Family Shelter, or the, the Oxford Houses. Next slide. We're also, a big part of what we do is, I mentioned earlier, is connecting folks. So in addition to connecting people with services, a lot of people, or housing services, a lot of people, when they come into us, haven't even started down some of these paths. So we're kind of their first step in plugging them into places. So we were able to get 69 folks last year set up on some medical insurance. We were able to get 11 folks that came into the program that didn't have access to cell phones, cell phones. We used to be able to get a lot more for that. There was a, some money around COVID programming to get people plugged in with phones. But as that funding wears down, it's, it's a little tougher. But we're still able to get, get folks' phones. They're not, they're not always the nicest, fanciest of phones. But we have a lot of people that will donate their old phone to the organization and give us permission to, to get it out to somebody if they need to. We're able to help 142 people with housing applications. And that's going in, filling them out with them, as well as helping to cover some of the small fees that are associated with just processing their housing applications. We were able to get 343 folks to medical and mental health appointments. We do have vehicles and drivers on site that are able to, to get folks in. They can just go ahead and sign up on a list and say, you know, I've got a mental health appointment in three days at Smoky Point. I need a ride there. And if they do that, we'll make sure that they get there. Someone will sit there, make sure that they get back to, to the shelter in the evening as well. And then we were able to take 98 folks that came through the program that did not currently have a mental health provider and, and link them with a mental health provider and get them plugged into that service that a lot of folks, by the time they come to First Step, are, are very much in need of that, that mental health piece. So that, that's something that, that we're always happy to do. Next slide. I mentioned that we did, we also do police drop-offs. In addition to the, the 546 people that came through coordinated entry, we saw another 230 folks that came to us through police drop-offs. Some of those folks are repeat customers and we see them more often. But, but 230 unique individuals come into us from all across Skagit County. But the majority of them tend to be coming to us from the Mount Vernon area. I think it's likely just because of the, the proximity and Mount Vernon's iOS team is, is really active and trying to get people in, into our, our program there. Next slide. Just to demonstrate a little bit about people coming from all over, you can see, these are the jail transition, or these are the, the police drop-off numbers for Skagit County. We have three from Anacortes, 38 from Burlington, 77, Mount Vernon, 27 through iOS, 12 through jail transition, 17 from the Department of Corrections, 19 from Sedro Woolley, 27 from the Sheriff's Office, one from Swenomish, five from State Patrol, and four from out of county. When people bring people from out of county, we try to really show them where they could have dropped somebody off within their county that would have saved them the long drive. We're not going to turn them away, but we do try to prioritize that those jail transition rooms are set for Skagit County police officers. We have three of the 45 units that we currently have that are designated only for law enforcement. So they're available there. And we're trying to look, this year, we just had some meetings earlier this week talking about ways that we could even free up more bed space for law enforcement if they need to bring folks in, recognizing that especially during the cold months, there might be more than three people that, that need to be dropped off. So we're working to kind of crack that nut and make sure we can provide more of those, those services to, to folks. Next slide. The other way that we do this is through, or the other way that people come into our shelters through winter shelter. We operate winter shelter only for four months out of the year. The, and that's kind of what the state of Washington has determined, that Washington has severe winter for only four months, although it's pretty, pretty cold and rainy for much longer than that four. But with the funding that we have, we can provide it for four months. And, and that's our, their commitment. So we saw 175 folks come in through the cold weather shelter this past year. We do 25 people a night that we can house. That's in, in addition to the 45 that we already house. And then we can in a, in a, the, the fire marshal doesn't love it, but if, if it's really, really cold, he gave us permission to go up to 28. And we have to get kind of creative with our placement of our cots, but we can go up to 28 if, if we need to. But that's a, another service that we provide. Next slide. This would just go into like looking at the, the operational support of it. So we had a, a lot of, as I mentioned, like a lot of the cities came together around getting us set up and making the purchases of, of the individual units that got set up. And then after that, originally, in year one, it was funded solely by the county. And then we've kind of been looking at going to different, different donors to that, just to make sure when there is budget constraints, that if, you know, one person's budget gets squeezed, maybe we're, we're spread a little bit, just to have a little more diversity in where those funds are coming from so that we can ensure it continues to operate. We currently receive funding, operational funding from Skagit County Public Health, City of Burlington, City of Mount Vernon, and then Skagit Friendship House donors. We had received funding from Department of Commerce, but their budget this year, we were invited to present to that again, but we were not, we didn't make the final budget on that. So we've got about a $270,000 shortfall right now that we're trying to put our head around with a couple other individuals to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna deal, deal with that going forward. But I'm sure we'll, we'll find some, some creative, some creative answers on that. Next slide. This is looking at First Step, how it's laid out. So all of those little squares are the 45 tiny houses. And then we also have, let's see what we've got, five bathrooms that are out there as well that also have shower units in it for everyone. It's in, in addition to, in that main room over on the right, or that large building, we also have some restrooms in there as well as office space and dining area. The red is three additional units that we're getting ready to put in right now. We've got some funding and some support at the City of Burlington to allow us to add an additional three units in there. So we're, we're in the process of doing that right now and trying to get cement poured. And hopefully in the next month or two, we'll have another three that'll be in there, which while. which while still won't deal with all of the, the long list that's on the coordinated entry list or at least kind of help us to, to provide more, more housing for folks. The list on coordinated entry to get in at any given time, I think last time I checked, it was like 150 long. So there's, there's quite a, quite a waiting list to get in. So three is definitely not going to solve all of that, but it's at least a, a step towards that. And it's, it's what we could, what we could get folks to agree to at this point. So we're going to move forward with that and then keep trying to, to, to chip away at, at that going forward, trying to get some, some more access to housing in there. Next slide. Yeah, and that's a, that's it. So thank you for your time. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. And if I can't answer them, I can commit that I'll get you that information through an email.
Thank you. Councilman Cox?
Thank you for the presentation and the good work you're doing with many of the less fortunate members of our community. Do you work with the Wise Teen Shelter? I was just curious about that. And I have another question after that.
Yeah, so we, we do kind of informally, where if we have people that are coming into our programs that are youth, we definitely make that referral either over to their program or right now with them kind of having a little bit of a, a setback and waiting till their building is, is up and running again, we'll connect them with, with other youth programs in neighboring counties. Just with the funding for youth, they're allowed to, through the state and through the federal government, allowed to house them from 18 to 25, whereas a lot of our programs are at a much shorter amount. So whenever we do get someone that's in that 18 to 25, we try to make a call and a referral into one of these programs because that's going to give them way more support than being in our program for 90 days. So we, we do work with them in that way, but that, that's kind of the extent of it and just kind of making those referrals and letting folks know that that service is there and that it's an amazing service for them, that they should probably go, go have a chat with them.
Okay. My second question is, I know one thing that sometimes is a barrier to people going into shelter is pets. How do you deal with that?
Oh yeah, First Step Center, we, we do allow pets. It, it sometimes is, is interesting, the, the, the number of pets that we do have. But yeah, we find a lot of times folks that are coming through that program, they've already gone through some kind of a traumatic event. They have their pet in their car and the, the thought to say, you can't come into shelter unless you also get rid of your dog just doesn't seem, doesn't seem right for us. So we, we do allow dogs, actually, we allow all, all, all animals in there. We've had some, some interesting, I think we've had a chicken and a duck and some interesting stuff there. We do try to talk with folks. I think the most dogs we've ever had in one of those units is two, just size-wise. It's, it's difficult to fit. But we did have a, a lady who was living in one of those with two big Conde Corso mastiffs. And I don't know quite how she made that work, but she did and she loved her dogs and they, they, they made that work for them. So we, we have that. And then we also have like a, a walking area in the back where they can take their dogs to, to relieve themselves. They just have to be able to kind of keep them under control or on a leash when they're, when they're in the facility. Yeah.
Councilman Burns?
First, I want to thank you for what you're doing to help get people back on track and back on their feet. Are you getting many seniors right now that are being priced out or what kind of situations are you finding?
Yeah, lots of seniors, lots of seniors that are coming through that either, like you said, the, the rents just got to where their fixed income could no longer keep up. Or we have a lot of folks that come in that had been living with a, a sister or a brother and then when that person passed away, they lost that housing at that point. We've seen folks that had their small apartments transitioned into Airbnbs and then they end up in our area. So most of the time with seniors, it, it's really just a matter of, this is exactly how much I have and I don't have any wiggle room to go any more than this. And unfortunately, when, when that hits, they, they end up getting referred to, to our program. There are a couple of programs where we can refer seniors into that are real low income or, or homeless. But the, the waiting list for those is, is pretty extreme. So it's, it's a difficult situation. And that's, like I said, been the huge driver from us going from being an 80-day average stay to 110 is just because it's like, nobody wants to, to tell that lady or that gentleman that they, they have to go back out into their car. So just kind of like a, if we've got to keep you here for another month or two to find something, we'll, we'll try to do that. And a lot of that is looking at even looking in county, but also looking at where we can refer people out of county. And in some cases, even refer people out of state with, with funds that we have that can get folks, you know, to another part of the country where they may have family. We've done that with diversion funds quite a bit. It's like, you know, you're probably not going to find anything here in that price range. But you say you have family in Pennsylvania, we can help with the, the plane or the bus ticket to get you to Pennsylvania to link you back with your family. So, but yeah, it's, it's a real challenge with seniors for sure.
Thank you for that and I appreciate what you're doing and that you're being flexible to try to get them housing. Mayor Johnson and myself are on the Skagit Transit Board and it recently came up to donate a pair of transit vehicle. And that's instantly what I thought of was the seniors that have a medical condition, something happens, they lose it all and they end up at your doorstep and making sure that they're able to get to an appointment. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Quick question before I thank you for being here. Cost of the tiny homes at First Step, what are you, what are you putting out for those?
For overall budget or to, to purchase individual units?
If the person were to, or even if a city wanted to purchase three or four or five of them?
So I think the new units now, they've, they've, the, the units that we currently have are kind of like their, their first go at it. And they've made quite a bit of changes to them since then that make them so they have a little bit of a longer lifespan or a little better insulated. I think right now they're looking at, I want to say that they're about $15,000 a pop right now. I think the ones that we had originally purchased were, were quite a bit lower than that. So that's kind of the, the cost around that. If I look at the, the cost to house somebody in our program though, where to house them, link them with services, three meals a day, transport, having the ability to have their caseworkers come in, we're, we're at under $70 a, a day per person. So I mean, you can't even get a motel room in, in Burlington or Mount Vernon for that. So we're able to do that, provide the meals as well as be a place where their caseworkers can come in and meet them. So that's kind of a, a, a general feel, I guess, for maybe how much it costs us to operate once we have the units and we're able to put them in.
Thank you for adding that.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Jonathan, for being here.
Oh yes, go ahead, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask, what is your general demographic that's, that's currently residing in your First Step units?
Sure. So the majority of our people that are coming through, like a lot of emergency shelters are predominantly male. But we are not as, as skewed male as, as a lot of shelters are. So like if, if I pull numbers on like Base Camp up in Bellingham, like that's, that's a lot of, a lot of men. We're closer to like maybe like 56, 57% men. So we've got a, a fairly even demographic of, of male and female. But we see the majority of our folks are either right at that 26 to 28 range where they've aged out of youth services and maybe they're still trying to figure out what's next or it's that, you know, 58 and older kind of an area is kind of where we see the most of our folks giving one way or the other of the age categories.
All right. Well, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you all for inviting me to chat. Appreciate you.
Okay, Monica, thank you for your patience. So Monica's from North Star. She's been here before and she has a presentation for us as well.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mayor Johnson, and good evening, council members. My name is Monica Negrilla and I'm so humbled to be again here with you all tonight and also follow Jonathan and Judge Stiles. So what I hope, thank you so much. Woody, next slide, please. What I hope to do tonight is just to do a brief refresher on North Star, just a brief overview for those who might be in the audience and might not be very familiar with. And then I would like to focus on a few accomplishments since that's the theme for tonight and then end with a couple of opportunities for collaborations. And I'm hoping to also show a brief video that we were able to put together. And it, it, it was completed just yesterday, I believe. So, next slide, please. Onto a brief overview. I would like to just tell you a little bit of what North Star is and why North Star before I move into accomplishments. So, next slide, please. In July of 2022, for those who are not familiar, the county commissioners and the mayors of our four cities got together to create North Star. The idea behind creating North Star was really simple. We all, they all realized that we are stronger together and perhaps we can do more with limited funds if we align our jurisdictions and work together. So really, North Star, that's how North Star was born. Since then, it really grew to include not only the governments, but also the private sectors, in particular, the nonprofit providers, also the criminal justice system. We have, as Mayor Johnson mentioned earlier, Judge Hauser serves on our, one of our task forces. We have hospitals, we have school districts, we have people with lived experience, we have first responders all coming together and trying to, to solve and tackle the big and most challenging and frankly, the most expensive issues in our community, right? Homelessness and behavioral health. So next slide, please. So why North Star? I think I mentioned it already a little bit. We realize that we can do together what the county or the state cannot do alone. And then we can be more effective with our limited resources if we work together and if we try to tackle the challenging issues at what we call a system level and more broadly, looking at the community in a more regional fashion and see where we can increase efficiencies. Next slide, please. So the vision for North Star when it was created was pretty simple and it's threefold. On one end, we believe that no one in our communities should live or die in the street or in their car. Secondly, we strongly believe that everyone can get the services that they need when they need them. And third, I really believe that everyone should have access to stable and safe housing. And so with the vision, we created a strategic framework. Next slide, please. That summarizes and really grounds our work. The strategic pillars are also three. And so we are, again, these are long-term, broad system-level visionary strategic goals. And so we are trying to work towards creating a sustainable governance and funding and staffing that's going to outlast temporary measures. We are also working towards creating an effective community-based system of care, acknowledging that many issues in our behavioral health system currently do not work. And thirdly, again, we want to create a stable and safe housing for everyone. So I just stormed a little bit through just providing an overview. But really in a nutshell, I want you all to think, for those who are not familiar, think of North Star. Just like Mayor Johnson said it so brilliantly earlier, as an advocacy group, this is not a separate organization, this is not another government entity. It's really a group of brilliant people, brilliant community members such as you, such as all of our jurisdictions, first responders, as I mentioned, in criminal justice system, everyone really coming together to solve and tackle big, challenging issues. Next slide, please. So that being said, I'm going to move on to some of the accomplishments so far under the North Star Collaborative. Next slide, please. And then I'll, I'll end with, with some opportunities to collaborate. So again, reminder, they started in 2022. So in the last couple of years, over $56 million were able to be leveraged just because all of you came together as a region to tackle these challenging issues. So broken down the 56 million, oh, million thousands, the $56 million broken down. And, and new funding is most of where the money came, about $40 million from requesting state legislative and applying for grants was one of the, the ways in which funding was secured. Almost $11 million were secured to really aligning North Star priorities. And I know we are talking about $15, $90, $14.06 and some behavioral health tax dollars, really working at the jurisdiction levels and trying to identify what are the priorities. I'm gonna circle back in just a minute on some of the nonprofits that were supported with that. And then about $5 million were already there from commitments made prior to the North Star Collaborative. I'm gonna go in the next few slides in breaking down these funds and where those were allocated and utilized. So next slide. So now looking at how the, the funds were divided based on different projects. Martha's Place was one of the probably largest initiatives that started with the North Star Initiative. This is the first permanent supportive and the only permanent supportive housing program in the county. Startup costs for that were about $23 million. You can see in parentheses the specific allocations and how they came from the county or from the different jurisdictions. And annual operations for that are around $1.5 million. And again, you're not going to see North Star funding, right? All the funding comes from the county or from the cities or again, from state allocations and grants and whatnot. The First Step Center, you heard Jonathan talk about startup costs were about half a million dollar there and came from the various jurisdictions in the county. Annual operations, you, again, you heard Jonathan speak on how they come from the county, city, previously from the state, about a million dollars there. The Skagit Star Center is a third project that is currently in, under construction here in, in, close to your neighborhood. The Star Center is actually the second phase of this project. The first one, as you are probably all familiar, included the Evaluation and Treatment Center. The second phase of the Star Center that is currently under construction and we hope that it's going to be complete at the end of this year and perhaps start early next year, includes 48 new beds for detox, stabilization, and co-congruent treatment. And so for that too, around $26 million were secured for startup and construction. And we anticipate that operations will be funded through Medicaid reimbursement. And a little bit of good news, fingers crossed, next week, we need to hold our breath until next week, state legislator, the North Star Collaborative requested from the state legislator one-time startup fund to help the provider start services, hire and train staff until they can request state Medicaid reimbursement. So we have currently allocated about $530,000 and hoping that the state legislator actually votes on that next week, then we will secure that. So that's a little bit of breaking, breaking down the $56 million. I'm gonna go into a few more details now just to tell you a little bit about some of those projects. Next slide, please. So I mentioned the Skagit Star Center. I think I, I highlighted a little bit of what those new beds will provide. It is a huge undertake by, by everyone. I think the, the biggest success in, about the Star Center, it's really the fact that it was born out of the ideas that the community brought together and especially actually first responders, knowing that there was a huge need for a place for first responders to drop off people who needed medical services that was an alternative to jail and to the current services that exist. Currently, for example, when somebody's being dropped off to detox, they need medical clearance. So often they end up in a revolving door between detox facility and ER and medical and back. So, often, they end up in a revolving door between detox facility and ER and medical and back. And that causes a lot of extra time for first responders who can now not respond to the actual crisis. And so, being able to, the Star Center will provide just a very easy drop-off for first responders who don't have to figure out other medical clearances and they can just drop off and somebody will take care of everything just because the, the new detox facility will also have that ability to do a medical clearance. So, I think that's one of the biggest success stories. And I think when I, when we talk with first responders, they still don't believe it. So, they are waiting to see it happen in action. So, that's that. Next slide, please. Another success and accomplishment through the really initiative and collaborative of North Star is Gelada and the collaboration with the correspond teams. Currently, we have a task force and we call it the Correspond Task Force, among a few other task forces. But we are bringing together the police and fire chiefs and their respective correspondence programs. And we are trying to coordinate regionally and how to best support people because these are often either through 911 calls or through simple outreach initiatives. These are really the first interactions with our folks in the community who are unhoused and/or chronically with behavioral health issues. And so, in trying to, to support the responders in a more regional fashion and be able to collaborate with one another, we launched in 2023 Gelada, which is a case management system and it's a coordination system that allows the correspondence teams to communicate with one another and decreases, increases efficiencies and really decreases that time and necessity often for people to have to tell their story multiple times. You might see an unhoused community member in Burlington today and they might be seen in Mount Vernon tomorrow. And because often people travel, it's so much easier to have one coordinated system in which the first responders and the correspondence teams can really just check the history of that person and try to support and better coordinate. And Sid Rowley, I know that you are launching a program with, in partnership with the city of Burlington. So, they are actually part of, the teams are part of our planning group on the correspond team. Very, very grateful to, to work with Chief Wagner and his team. And we are in the process to work with them in providing access to Gelada and making sure that they are part of that coordination system so they can communicate with their partners on this. Next slide, please. So, another quick, small but big accomplishment was revamping the coordinated entry system. Prior to the new launch that happened actually last year in February, people had only one option to, to sign up to be part of the coordinated entry system and basically sign up to stay in line for the services that you heard Jonathan speak earlier, right? There's a, there's a line for services for shelter, there's a line for all those support services. So, prior to launching the new system, people had to stay in line in person, often with their belongings for hours and, and it was a crunky system. And so, with the launch of the, the new system, people now can have an easier access to getting basically on the waitlist. They don't have to be in person, they can just call 211 directly. Or if they are already connected with some service providers, they can, through their service providers, get on their list. Another big accomplishment related to the coordinated entry system was that in the past, people had to also remain on the list, right? Once you, you put yourself on the list, you need to remain on the list. With the new system, it's now easier for people to, to be maintained on the list and they don't just drop off without being able to follow along and see if they continue to need services. So, a lot of great improvements have happened. Again, we are just far, far from arriving. But all these small, big changes can make a difference down the line. And so, when we talk about that system change, it's important to just try to highlight that there are so many different steps and pieces to, to really creating a system that's cohesive and works well together. So, next slide, please. So, so far, I, I touched on some of the accomplishments that happened so far. And I thought that it might be helpful to also highlight some of the things that we are currently working on. So, I named them kind of success in the making because we are working really hard on those. And we hope to also have you a part of these conversations and this work as you see fit and as your availability allows. But currently, we are working on really revamping what we call the NOFA for homeless housing and services. NOFA, it's Notice of Funding Availability. This has been in place for many, many years and our jurisdictions, all of you, have been part of that. There are opportunities to revamp that and just to provide for better coordination on how those funds are allocated and try to find ways to better make it easier somehow to allocate and prioritize funds. Again, going back to what I said earlier, trying to do more with less. For example, this year only, I think, under that NOFA application, there are about $3 million available for funding and we received a request for over $7 million. So, the, the decisions are very, very challenging, but trying to find a better way that's going to be perhaps multi-year where providers don't have to apply perhaps every year, maybe looking into, can we do it every other year just to make it a little bit easier for providers? Or can we do, create some prioritization criteria that's going to make it easier for elected officials and those who are part of the review panel? I mentioned briefly about the Correspond Task Force. So, we met now about five times. We are working together with all our jurisdictions, including the county sheriff's office, on creating and coming up with a plan that is coordinated, that starts and builds from the existing programs. We want to look at what each of the existing programs, what are their strengths, identifying where are the gaps in the community and throughout the county and then try to work together on how to, to better serve the entire region. We also have a housing task force and a recovery task force. Both of those are, have been in place for a couple of years now. The housing task force has done an incredibly amazing job. And really the same, we have planners and directors. I see Nicole there, so grateful for having you there. They are, again, just amazing professionals who are coming together from each of the jurisdictions and trying to learn how to make it easier, frankly, let's say, for those who want to invest in building housing in our region and how to make it easier for them to understand the policies and perhaps to see if we can align policies and then also to identify and create a pipeline of different projects that, that could lead to more housing. The recovery task force is currently working and looking and seeing how they can embed more peer coaches within different systems, including hospitals and ER. Again, looking at what can we do to create some cost savings measures. And they're also working on funding jointly, applications and grants and just not leaving any stone unturned. And so, other things in the making, I'm going to talk to you in just a minute about the inaugural North Star Symposium. So, I'm going to skip through that really quick and about the joint city council meeting. But we are also working on, on, on the existing groups and task forces and advisory committees that we have in place and how can we make them more efficient and be very mindful that everybody's using and volunteering their time, often for hours, to, to, to work together. So, we are looking at enhancing some of that and really building a, a bigger table, widening the ecosystem. I know the, since I came into my role, it's been now about six months. I know that I also connected with some businesses. The chambers of commerce are really interested in, in joining and seeing how we can put our heads together and partner. So, we are looking at those options. Next slide, please. I would love to talk to you just for a couple of minutes about two upcoming opportunities for us to further connect. I'm very, very grateful to say that we are doing a North Star Connect Symposium. This is our inaugural conference on June 6th. It's on a Friday from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We are very, very fortunate, speaking of funding. We had two amazing sponsors that are paying for the entire conference. As of this morning, we had about 225 people registered for it. We are closing registration at 250. So, it's filling up really quick. And we have great nationally recognized speakers. We are following the North Star strategic pillars. So, we have a track on housing, we have a track on the community-based system of care, both for treatment and recovery services. And then we have a track on system-level change and leadership. So, for anyone interested, please feel free to register. On that same day, pre-conference, starting bright and early at 8:00 AM, we are having a joint city council meetings and a county commissioner meeting. So, for the first time, we are bringing together and we are inviting all city councils from all of our four cities and the county commissioners. We would love to have you there if you can spare the first hour of your morning from 8:00 until about 9:15, to really continue our conversations on, on how we can strengthen this collaborative, how we can do better, perhaps even look into how to best allocate opioid settlement funds. So, please consider that invitation with open hearts. We would love to have you there. And so, that concludes my presentation. The next slide offers you more details about the symposium. And so, before I take questions, with your permission, I have a brief video that I'm very, very privileged at the county. We have amazing communication staff. First of all, very lucky that we have communication staff. And so, they are very gifted at public health. They've been working with some of our partners. You're going to see some very familiar faces in the video. But I think it summarizes, I think, the power of partnership, but also summarizes really the success stories and those that do recover, they do heal. And to me, when I saw that, outside of wanting to cry, was really also just give hope. So, I hope you enjoy it and then I'm available for questions. Thank you. And thank you so much, Woody, for juggling all of that.
What impresses me about folks in recovery is the amount of resilience it takes to have overcome that and to still have enough hope in life to step forward and to step into something that feels different from where they came from.
I think the path through substance use and then recovery and then being housed is not very straight or clear.
Folks who have struggled with addiction and/or mental health challenges almost all have one thing in common and that's life trauma. So, the trauma that brings people to a place of addiction or brings people to a place of mental health challenge is real and those stories are really, really difficult to hear.
My, my childhood was surrounded by lots of love. My brother and I were best friends. He was 16 and I was 17 and we were involved in an accident in northern Idaho. There was four of us in the vehicle and two of us made it through it and two of us passed away. And one of them was my brother. I took that shame and guilt and the blame and I just went and isolated. I felt all alone and there was no purpose left in my life.
A person's success in their long-term recovery from substance use challenges or mental health challenges has everything to do with whether or not their community will welcome them back. A person needs a place to lie their head at night where they can fix food and feel safe and secure and all of those things that are really basic. And until those basic needs are met, all of those other things that we hope for people aren't going to happen. And so, housing is where all of that starts.
My husband and I have five children. Seven years ago, our youngest son, Patrick, at the age of 30, died from an overdose. He was college educated, he was an Eagle Scout, he was employed, had health insurance, was really active in the local Rotary Club. And if it's that big of a struggle for someone who has everything, then how difficult this is for people who can't get into treatment when they call, don't have the supports. I miss him every day.
These are mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, to which something happened. And when we start to get a sense of what happened in someone's story, it changes everything about how we see them.
I can't say enough about how defeated I was for and have five decades living as a drug-addict alcoholic, just not knowing. Homelessness was very challenging, being cold, being hungry, not having the courage to change, not having the courage to ask. And you always felt like you were being judged. And it was all those things about that judgment that really weighed a lot.
We as taxpayers are paying the cost for a system that is basically treating people with either hospital stays, inpatient treatment and, and jail and incarceration. So, those are really expensive interventions that the taxpayers are picking up the tab for that on their own are not particularly effective.
What North Star wants to do is build a system where people can get treatment when and where they need it and be able to be supported through treatment and into recovery and help them stay in recovery.
I live with lots of blessings today. I mean, live with a lot of gratitude and gratefulness. Being able to be part of this county by paying it forward. I look at the word hope and hope, I look at helping other people evolve because that's what you people have done for me, was help me evolve.
I look at North Star like this. We as the county and each of these four major cities, we all have cards to play. None of our cards are very impressive by themselves. But if we play our best cards to the middle, then the winning hand is the community. We need empathetic hearts that can drive to solutions and invest in a system that works. Thank you, Monica.
Monica, thanks for the great presentation. I've been very impressed at the meetings I'm at, the breadth of people that are there from all different kinds of occupations and agencies because I think you need a regional approach to solve this issue. A quick question, I always ask this. When do you think the North Star Center will be operational?
The Star Center, our hope is early 2026 or the end of this year, probably most likely first quarter of 2026.
Going up fast.
Yes.
Well, the first, first phase is up and running.
Yes, the first phase is up and running.
The second phase is what we're working on, yeah. Councilwoman Burns?
Thank you for the presentation and what you're doing, I appreciate it. Looking at the coordination that you're doing, something I've thought about repeatedly is, are you starting to coordinate like a database of all the services that are offered in Skagit County? Whether it be First Step, the Recovery Cafe, Helping Hands? Whether it be First Step, the Recovery Cafe, Helping Hands, I mean, the Lions Club. We'll give you glasses if you need it. You know, all those services add up. So is there any kind of a database that's being built for that?
So currently, there is one for the Behavioral Health Services, and we have been receiving feedback and input that perhaps one that's broader might be helpful. So that is something for us to certainly consider, and perhaps one of the groups can take it on. I think the challenge so far has been that so many things change so rapidly that it's not, the difficulty is perhaps not so much to putting them together, but to make sure that we maintain that and the accuracy. And so that's all, but we did not figure that part out yet, but it's great.
Finding a way to check in with every organization or automated check-ins to say, "You still doing this?"
Yes, exactly. But that is, thank you for that. It's so helpful to hear that from your end, too, you see that as a need, because I think we should put it as a need and see how we can tackle it.
I think that would help some of the organizations figure out where they can fill holes or connect somebody with a service that they know they need, but they don't offer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Go ahead, Councilman Labaka.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Monica, for coming and sharing that with us. It's very much appreciated. I think fewer and fewer people in our community and in this state are being able to say they don't know somebody, or they don't have a family member, or they don't have a friend who's a close friend who's going through that, who's living in their car or dealing with substance abuse. I had two questions. One was, one of the pillars with housing, and then the other one would be with the substance abuse. With the housing, we know that affordable housing is a challenge in Skagit County. And so one of the things that's always just baffled me is the cost it takes to build units. So like Martha's House, there was $22.5 million for 70 units, or there's 48 units for $26.5 million for the Star Center. I mean, at that rate, you're looking at, you know, $300,000 to $500,000 per unit for an apartment. How do we combat, I mean, if that's a volunteer service for low income, trying to get through, how do we combat and bring those costs down? Is anybody watching those costs to figure out, like, is it because it's government, it's prevailing wage, that a private developer would do it for so much cheaper?
Yeah, that is a very difficult question, and you're absolutely right. I think, yes, it's, the cost of building housing is just, it's challenging. And I almost wanna hear if Nicole has ideas. Not that I wanna put her on the spot, but she's more expert than I am. But the challenge, I think it is, it's driven by the market, right? And so there's not much that government or anyone can do other than really creating policies that are gonna make it more interesting for investors to come and develop more housing at all income levels, including affordable housing, right? And that's the challenge. It's almost like a catch-22, right? It's like vacancy rates are so low, but to build, it's so expensive. And so it's hard to get out of that vicious cycle. And the answer is really, we just need to do something to encourage anyone, anywhere, to just build more housing. So I'm sorry, I don't have...
No, that's totally fine. With, like, Martha's place, that was built a few years ago, and that was, it's got a $1.5 million operating cost, probably for personnel, and then set aside for roofing, material, stuff like that, on ongoing cost. But the build cost of that unit versus a private developer, like Volunteers of America is gonna build 42 units in Burlington. I think they still are, various things like that. I'm just curious, why does it cost so much for nonprofits to build an apartment building or units dedicated to help others?
Right.
Like a retrofit, or even just asking a private developer to build, because they don't build at that rate. I've talked to a number of them, and they said they couldn't afford to do it at $300,000 to $500,000 a unit that it seems that nonprofits are spending to build these units.
Yeah, so I think that's exactly, you touched on that, right? For for-profit developers, it's just, it's, they need to try to make a profit, and they cannot. Nonprofit developers, they just don't make a profit, and often perhaps they also are trying to secure donations and grants that typically for-profit developers don't necessarily have access to. And so on that, I'm sorry, I realize that I lost your question.
That's okay. It was basically, it seemed like it costs more for nonprofit than for profit to build. But, you know, kinda like what Jonathan was saying about $15,000 for a unit for a tiny home. It's like, best bang for my buck. I've only got so much, let's put that there. And I'm sure there's people looking at those costs and asking those questions, for sure.
Yes, and so that's, I'm going back to what you're saying. I think that's exactly, I think the Housing Task Force is looking at different policies, like, okay, can we make it more attractive by perhaps reducing parking requirements to make it cheaper to build, right? Or perhaps allowing some, speeding up the process for permitting where things are pretty clear. So again, to try to reduce the cost. So those are some of the things that I know that the Housing Task Force is looking at. And I'm sure that perhaps through the Planning Commission, they might come to you as well. But those are the small, big things.
It might be interesting to see the difference in private developers versus what nonprofits are developing at and asking those questions, is why does it cost so much more for a nonprofit to build the same unit? But the other question was on substance abuse, and we are seeing a lot of that in our community. What we would love to see in every community is a decrease, like a chart that comes in to say, "This is a program we instituted. North Star, three years ago, we got $56 million in cash." And we are seeing a decrease in the trend data that we are seeing. So many people helped, that now they're in the system, and they're providing, and they're helping others, and we are seeing less and less people in need. Do you foresee that being a trend that we can anticipate seeing at some point?
So absolutely, I think, looking at data and metrics, I think, as we continue now to grow, that's our next step, to looking at, okay, how can we tell the story through some numbers and data? And so I so appreciate that input against hearing it from you as also being a need and interest. Definitely will focus on that. And that's my hope as well. I think we need more time, perhaps. Ideally, that's what we are all aiming towards, right? To see a decrease in number of folks. And whether it's the community court working, or nonprofits, all of us working together. Sometimes it gets worse before it gets better. Hopefully not. It feels like it cannot get worse, but I don't have the data, but I hope, I would like to bring back and start looking and tracking some of that data. And again, the challenge is with, when we look at system level and regional level, and trying to pull together all the data from the inpatient and outpatient providers and hospitals, it just takes a little bit more time to follow it, so we can start with smaller programs and start somewhere.
All right, thank you for your time. And thank you, Mayor, for setting it up in such a way that we have the court saying, "This is how we're attacking this challenge." Friendship House, North Star, and then kind of doing this flow. It went very well.
Well, thank you.
Good questions, too.
Thank you.
And Councilman Lloyd?
Yes, ma'am. I got one question. I've never heard the answer to this. So is there, if one of us runs into somebody that needs some help, is there a phone number we can call?
Yes, 211.
211.
That's probably the easiest to get them connected. Yes, 211 would be the easiest.
That would be a good number to publicize.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you, Monica. Thank you, Brock, and thank you, Jonathan, for coming in tonight and sharing the information that you have. It's vital, and it's what is actually working towards changing our community and making it healthier. And more than that, giving people an opportunity to choose, to live lives that are productive and happy. So thank you very much for coming in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Yep. Okay. Moving on, then, to City Administrator Report. Charlie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Johnson, Council. Woody, if you could pull up that PowerPoint presentation. I've got a couple of items this evening. The first is what's on the agenda, the Human Services Funding Update and Check-In. I promise this will be brief. And then we also have a grant deadline looming on Friday for a county grant program that is for economic development funds. And last year, you may recall, we applied for murals. We were unsuccessful, but we've got some other public infrastructure projects that we need to check in with you on and make sure you're okay with us applying for those, and hopefully we'll get those awards. And we have one other housing project that relates to public infrastructure as well that we want to check in with you on. So we'll get to that, but let's do Human Services, since we've just had a number of presentations on this topic. And I really just wanted to cover our funding sources and just give you a quick update. So Woody, if you could go to the next slide. So House Bill 1406. As you may recall, we had two contracts with Family Promise. We had one in 2023, and then we extended that actually halfway into 2024, and we also did a 2024 contract. Those are both currently expired. There's one piece of those contracts that Family Promise did not complete, and that related to a down payment on our property. And so you will see in the packet, they have submitted a request for that down payment money to, they're now ready to execute that. So that's for Council's consideration whenever you want to do that. And we can bring that back to you as well. We're not looking to put five decisions into this discussion tonight, but if Council feels strongly about it, just let us know. Our annual cash flow with 1406 is about $15,000, so it's not a lot of money in there. We had a significant fund balance built up before we got to the '23 and '24 contracts, and then we spent that down. So now we're down to a much lower amount. Current fund balance is about $27,000. So if we did provide Family Promise that request, we'd be down to about $7,000. And I wouldn't recommend we do anything else for a little while until that builds back up. Probably wait the rest of the year and then look at it again next year. And of course, the county's always an option, as you've just heard the presentation on North Star. So that's there as well. Any questions on 1406? There are only three of these topics. So 1406, 1590, and the opioid funds. All right. If not, Woody, we can go ahead and move on. So 1590, this is really focused on the construction funding, because in the operations funding, we have three contracts already in place, one with Helping Hands, one with YMCA, and one with Family Promise. Those are all underway. At some point, those will conclude, and we'll come back and talk with you some more about those funds and how you want to proceed with reallocation or looking at doing something else. But right now, for 1590, we have about 500, we estimate about $548,000 will be collected by June. Right now, we've got well over 500, so that's just a projection. But the reason we're projecting is we have an RFP that we've, you know, been working on for a while. It's ready to go out on the 5th of May. We would be under contract, we anticipate, by October, if things go according to schedule. And again, the option remains to look at contracting the county on this one as well. So it's kind of last call, because once we put the RFP out there, we're going down a certain road. Any questions from Council on 1590 construction?
Yeah, thanks, Charlie. So the construction funding, this is the one that we decided we were gonna put together a committee for to review the responses to our RFP. I think it was myself, Councilwoman Diamond was on there, Councilwoman Labaka, and then we were asking for a couple of the Planning Commission commissioners to join us on that endeavor. So are we, what do you think the timeframe is that we'd be looking at reviewing? Any of the responses to our RFP, if we're looking to be contracted by October?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but my recollection is we're gonna put it out in May. I think we're gonna give them a couple of months, so probably July is when we'd be looking and getting together to go through those. And then we come back to Council roughly August for discussion on award, what we want to do, and making recommendations. And then we need some time after that to actually put the contract together, which is why October would really be the point at which we'd be ready for somebody to move forward.
Thank you.
Yep.
I think that, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that helped my understanding, too, what Councilman Henderson was talking about. And I was just curious, because we were gonna set this out in the beginning of the year or have it ready toward the end of last year, so that way these Family Promise, other agencies as well, Helping Hands, and even Friendship House, all these agencies can apply for it. But that would allow that money to be placed into actual hands as soon as possible. We understood there was an urgent need for housing, which we've even heard tonight. So being able to see some of those great ideas. Some of them were really good ideas for, like, seniors that Councilman Burns talked about and whatnot, so. But you're looking at August before we get a chance to really start, like, getting that circulated through? July for our view, and then...
Yeah, I think August is when the Council would really be talking about it. The reason for that is we need to put it out there and give these folks some time. I've cut down the timeline. The original RFP called for pre-conference meetings with each of the potential applicants, and I cut that out. We had talked about possibly having the housing authority get involved in this, and the Council cut that out at prior discussion. So we have consolidated the timeline, but we had a fair amount of discussion about the housing affordability requirements in prior council meetings, and that delayed us a bit. And then, in all transparency, I've got a few other things that I'm doing for the city as well. So it's just, I've gotta find the time in my schedule to be able to work on this. So it spreads it out a bit. If there are no more questions, we can move on to the last one, which is our opioid funds. So opioid settlement funding, currently, we sit at about $85,000 in our account. This money's a little bit tricky, because some of it is coming in on a consistent pattern, and some of it's coming in all at once. And so it's a little bit hard to forecast, but I would recommend for this funding that we kind of look at it on a year-by-year basis, and that we look at one-time expenditures or things that we can fund for a year, and then reconsider based on cash flow. It's pretty complicated, because we've had a number of different settlements at this point. But with that, we are obligated by the One Washington MOU, which is what allowed us to have a lot of this money come to us. We have to have a spending plan, so it's something we're gonna need to put together as we really engage with the opioid funds. We have to have an application process for folks to be able to apply for the funds, and we are required to report our spending. So there's some transparency involved there. We also contract this with the county if we're so inclined. One thing, talking to the mayor that I learned about is the Star Center, there was money promised for startup costs, as was mentioned in the prior presentation. And hopefully, the legislature will be able to come through and deliver on that money, but it's possible that there's gonna be a significant shortfall. So it's one discussion that they're having at the county is potentially taking opioid funds to help with the startup cost that, so it can get off the ground. Mayor Johnson, I don't know if you have further thoughts on that or comments that you want to offer, but...
No, I think it'd be, I know... I do know with the opioid funding that the one thing that we do have to do is it has to go somewhere where it's actually applicable. And when you're putting it someplace where it's recovery, I think that that's a good fit. Star Center is all about that, it's about recovery, so.
I had a question on that. For the startup costs, what is the budget shortfall there? What's our number that we're looking at?
Monica, can I give that to you? You can do, one to the mic.
So the initial request from the state legislator was around $1.5 million. And so we are now slated to receive about $530,000. So there's a shortfall, still about $1 million, for the initial one-time startup costs.
Like, around $970,000?
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you very much for that information. Have we exhausted all of our other resources to figure out whether this opioid settlement money can be used to further fund anything within our police or fire departments?
We have not exhausted all of that. It can be used to fund things, and then our police and fire departments are can, I believe. You know, one of those things. There's a long list of possible things, including drug task force activities. I know Ocarbor funded their drug task force. We did purchase a K-9 with this money. That's the one expense we've had so far.
And then to follow up on that, since we are issuing that RFP for our 1590 funding, I think if we were to look at funding startup costs on the Star Center, that'd be more appropriate use for that money as far as building, because there are overnight beds there. I think we can finagle that in by the letter of the law that this is for a housing or transitional housing piece, and figure out whether or not we can use our opioids funds for our first responders, because we can't use our 1590 funds for them at all.
That's true. The 1590 operating funds, I think we could get there on the Star Center startup costs. The 1590 construction, unless they have more construction needs, it's gonna be a tough one.
So we're not talking about, we're not talking about a cash startup for the project. We're talking about a cash startup for services?
Yes. Yeah, that's my understanding. So for service delivery until Medicare can be built.
Is there a way to balance, is there a way to balance that to where they're taking the construct, some of the construction funding out, and we're replenishing that?
No, the funding that came in was from the legislature.
It was, all of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that was of the second phase. That was the first phase of the second phase, is getting it built. And so startup has to do with bringing people in, the furniture, all of that, so that there can be treatment that happens there.
But there might be some 1590 funding for... But there might be some 1590 funding for the operational costs for that.
Yeah, it'd be a council call. It would depend on the timing, but the timing could work out. We've got those three contracts I mentioned that are out there. Helping Hands, I think, is going to end their contract relatively soon, because they're burning through the money pretty quickly. YMCA's ends somewhere out there around the end of the year, maybe before the end of the year. So there could be some money available to look at, that if that's council desire.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I had, just on that note, and even actually to comment on Henderson's note after that, I was wondering if there's a way to do more of like a pie chart, where we can divide it into maybe three different sections, different portions per each section. They don't have to be the same, but prevention, and then obviously law enforcement, but with education as well, and be able to have some that can be allocated towards an RPF for the Y or the schools, in some way to get education to the youth to prevent them from being tempted to go into the, to use drugs, or to, you know, the awareness of opioids, the awareness of all that. I think with the HB 1590 fund, we had a great discussion on the council of best buck for the bang, and what we were looking at was the cost of beds for certain units up in the range of $500-plus thousand, such as with the Star unit, that it would be best used if we did the brick and mortar with more local-type housing, Family Promise, provided some options for, you know, $30,000, $40,000 per bed. Helping Hands provided some options for $30,000, $40,000 per bed, plus rental supplemental income for elderly on their property as well. So we were, I think, looking at using that money a lot more, or a bit more wisely, as far as bang for the buck, if I remember that conversation. And that's why we ended up going with Family Promise, the Y, and with Helping Hands with our service fees. And now we still got the brick and mortar waiting for the RPF. So that one, I don't think, Ellen, we'd be able, or Councilman Henderson, that we just give that to the Star unit without weighing the best bang for the buck. Thanks.
All right.
Should use the mic. Okay, that is it for my human services check-in. So thank you all. Appreciate the feedback, the thoughts, and hopefully we're all on the same page, at least with where we are currently at the moment. The second piece of this update is just checking in on the grant deadline that we have on Friday, and so I'm going to turn it over to Peter Relain, our city engineer, to cover the two infrastructure projects that he's been working on applications for.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and council. So two projects we have, one is the SR9 Township Roundabout at John Liner McGaragill. We're requesting $500,000 from the Skagit County Economic Development, and this builds on top of an existing grant we have from them at $250,000. And we can use those funds to provide the match for a $3.4 million transportation improvement board grant we have, and we're scheduled to go into construction in the summer. So we can use those funds as our match at 80/20. Our second project is the Jones-John Liner Railroad Undercrossing, and for that, we are requesting $750,000, and we can use that as match on an existing $2.1 million transportation improvement board grant.
Are you looking for a- Are you looking for a motion, Peter?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so is there a motion to support those requests for grant?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
I'll second that motion. I did have one question. Those matching grants are in accordance with money we have already had set to the side. It's not matching with new funding that's not allocated for that, right, from what I understand?
For the roundabout? Yes, sir. For the railroad undercrossing, we do have $2.1 million. That project is not fully funded, and we will likely be going back to TIB for additional funding, and that $750,000 would be used as match for that as well.
Okay.
I had a quick question. Somebody before me.
You just want here, yes, no? Oh, okay. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman Cock.
Yes, on the McGargyle Township Roundabout, will that be completed before the start of the next school year? Because that's a pretty jumbled-up situation for parents there.
Yes, sir, and that is our goal. We're going out to bid on Thursday, so it is a tight timeline, but that is our goal, is to be, is within the summer window.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you. I missed this in the packet, was this added late? Because I was looking for the fiscal impact for, off of this.
No, this did not make the packet.
Okay. So can we, can we go over the numbers again one more time, by way of what you're asking for, for a match?
Here.
That we're supposed to match?
Yes, sir. So for, let's see, so we have, for the roundabout, we have $3.4 million grant from TIB.
There's one.
And that is matched at 80/20. So we provide 20%, and they provide 80%.
Here's the second one, for you to look at.
Okay. So right now, that would be, we would need to provide $500,000, $506,000, and the existing $250,000 plus the $500,000, that provides the match, and also provide some buffer. You know, our goal is never unforeseen conditions, but they do happen with construction, so we want to be prepared with that.
And where's this money set aside, that we're matching with?
So the grants would provide the matching.
The grant?
The Skagit County-
The grants are providing?
Would provide matching for the TIB money.
So for the, are we doing this in two separate motions, Mayor, or for the two separate projects?
I don't think we need to do that. We could go, well, it's up to you, but I don't think it's really necessary. It'd be, we're asked, we have two asks. One is for the 750. It would be matching to cover the, is it the 4 million, more 4 million plus?
The, we're asking for $500,000 for the roundabout and $750,000 for the railroad undercrossing.
Yeah. So these are the two asks right here.
Okay, so just, just for me to get myself up to speed, so I can vote on this right. So we're asking the-
This is the, this comes around once a year. It's the Skagit County-
EDA?
Economic Development.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're asking EDA ask essentially for 1.25 million to, for matching funds, is what we're asking for.
Correct.
So you're, you're not asking this council to come out of pocket for any money. You're asking to apply for these two grants for-
Right.
One and a quarter.
Yes, sir. They can be used as local match.
Yeah.
That's, that's where I got jumbled up.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Did that get seconded yet?
Yes, it did. Yeah, actually, it was a motion by Councilman Cock and seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Is there any more questions or discussions? Okay, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay.
All right. One more.
Okay.
So same grant process. This is for public infrastructure. This grant process used to be only for economic development projects. And in 2022, the legislature changed the law and allowed for housing projects to be, affordable housing projects to be included as well. And the county then adopted its own standards, and this is the first year that housing projects can receive, that folks can apply for housing money from the county. The county's standard is 80% of area median income. That is, you have to be at least at that level of affordability in order to qualify. We have a project in town, Beatty Square, which you're going to see later on the agenda here, that is looking at setting aside some of the units. It's 138-unit mixed-use development. Their plan is to have the Boys and Girls Club on the first floor, to develop the second, essentially, club here in the city for the Boys and Girls Club, and also to provide childcare out of that site. So they are going to take up a significant percentage of the first floor. There'll still be some retail space left. And they are looking at setting aside some of their units at 80% AMI. They have a separate grant. They're partnering with Volunteers of America, and they're asking if the city will also apply for some of the public infrastructure that needs to be built as a part of the project. No match required. We would simply be putting the application in. If it's successful, then we are working out the structure, but, you know, our desire would be to have those funds go directly to the developer to provide that construction, provide those units. So that's the last of the three. We wanted to check in with you all on it as well. We have a representative here in the room, Garrett Michael, who's working with the developer RJ Group as well, and could probably speak more to the project if council, if you've got detailed questions.
I have a quick question for you. I want to know how much time this is going to require of our, of our staff.
How much time? I think fairly minimal. That Mr. Garrett is, or Mr. Michael is putting together the application. So we'll be reviewing the application, and we would be doing that tomorrow. And if any edits are needed, those would be made. Otherwise, you know, we would submit the application. At that point, the way we would structure this is that we would not be doing this construction. This construction would go to the developer to do.
Okay. Other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you for clarifying that. That was going to be part of my question. And just to verify, we would essentially just be a pass-through at this point with the finances?
As long as we can do it that way, yes.
And there's obviously a deadline on this being-
It's Friday.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Cock.
Just a quick question. So the present Seadrill Woolly Boys and Girls Club that's near Cascade Middle School would then move there. Is that correct?
No, that would stay at the middle school, but this would be a new club on the other side of town.
Oh, interesting.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My understanding was that this Boys and Girls Club would be part of a space almost donated, or in relation to receiving that grant funding, which, just in talking to a few members in the community, a daycare or something of that sort is definitely needed in our community. Northwest Cascade Christian Center has a daycare there that's filled all the time, and there's been a big call to see that. So I know that we've had discussion about utilizing, seeing if there's a way a developer would utilize retail space at the bottom for event, or bigger items than just trying to create a bunch of small shops. So when I heard about that idea, I was actually very excited about it. So I agree with this, and I'll make a motion to put that forward.
I have one more question here. Councilwoman Cassidy?
Okay.
Your lights on?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to clarify something, so that I'm not confused. When this happens, do you remember when that lady came in and she was talking about the tax shift of how that works? Does this apply to this?
This is not the multifamily tax exemption.
Okay.
This is a grant application that would simply help make this project a reality.
Okay.
And Councilwoman Diamond?
Is the standard practice now, moving forward, that if this is to go forward in setting a precedence for the rest of the community, that this is something the city is going to do for any and all developers in the future?
That is something-
Because it does, in fact, set a precedent.
It does set a precedent, and that is, that is something definitely for the council to consider in this case. We are obviously engaged in the comprehensive plan, and that's going to result in some new policies, I'm sure, from the council when we're done in the housing element. We don't exactly know what that's going to look like yet. But this is the type of thing that if the council wants to realize the housing targets that are going to end up being in our comprehensive plan, that would be helpful. But we'll need to have a process, I think. We have one interested developer this time. I think in the future, what if we have two? What if we have three? How are we going to handle that? So we're going to need to develop a process if we're going to go forward and continue to do this.
Right, and it's my understanding, I wanted to also clarify that this is, in fact, has nothing to do with the multifamily tax exemption.
Correct.
I have had extreme pushback from the community in regards to that. That development should pay for development, and it should not be the existing community members that are already being extremely taxed and struggling to pick up the pace for that, to bring in additional housing, when we have current residents here that are paycheck-to-paycheck, or on fixed incomes, and, and, you know, still trying to figure out and juggle whether they need to reduce, to get rid of their internet to pay their garbage bill. You know, it's, there are people that have those real struggles. And so if we are pushing additional development onto current existing community members and constituents, it's definitely something I will never move forward with. And so I want to make sure that that's, in fact, clear, that that has nothing to do with what this is.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's a future comprehensive plan discussion.
I will, in all, in my perspective, I don't necessarily disagree with anything that has to do with the boys, you know, the thought process behind having a childcare center, and what is intended to be done with that does sound great, but I do believe that it does also create a precedence in moving forward, when you have very specific developers coming in and asking for stuff, which in fact becomes a favor from the city to do. And if other developers are coming in and asking those same things, and we are not willing and able to do that for them, it does put, in my opinion, the city in a very liable, risky situation. And so I just want to be very clear that that aspect of it makes me uncomfortable.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Two-part question. So if we're making a motion to say yes on this, what are we saying yes to, exactly? Because, again, this is, this is the second time I got ambushed tonight, and I don't have, I don't have anything in front of me that I can read, and I don't want to go off and say yes to this on a whim. And if we do say yes to having that application go through, do we then again, is it up to us to approve or deny that application going through again?
Yes. Yeah, it's a two-step process, the way we currently have it set up. And the amount would be not to exceed $750,000. So it's the maximum grant amount if we end up going for that amount.
And what is that grant for exactly?
It's for public infrastructure, to support workforce housing development.
Can you clarify what workforce housing development is supposed to mean in regards to this?
80% of area median income level. So really, the goal of workforce housing is for folks who don't quite make enough to be able to afford market-rate housing, but don't make so little that they qualify for public assistance or other things.
And who is the grant through?
It's, it's the county.
Yeah, it's the same one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, it's Skagit County.
And so how many units are going to be set aside?
That's a question I have for Mr. Garrett.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. How many units in all, and how many of them are going to be set aside?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. So this overall Beatty Square project is going to be 138 apartment units over the about 15,000 square feet of retail. The Boys and Girls Club taking most of that ground floor's place. To the, closer to the creek side of that project is going to be the 68-unit townhome development, and then about 28 cottage-style homes. Depending on the funding grant size, that is, just depending on that much, that's really how much of the 80% of those units we can set aside. Because if we can build a unit for 550, but only sell it for 330, given the 80% AMI threshold, we need the funding to cover that difference of the cost. So it just depends on how much of that 750,000 that we can get. But our, I would say our goal is two of the cottage buildings, which are four-unit buildings.
So two cottages would be the?
It'd be eight total.
Okay, eight total.
Two of the buildings.
And are the cottage-style homes, is that considering needing to be rezoned for cottage styles? Because I recall seeing some of that in different development projects, or is that cottage style just in regards to the, to the type of structure that you're building? It's not something that's going to be requiring rezoning, and you're banking on something happening in the future?
Yes, we're almost at building permit issuance. We're hoping to break ground on this project in the summer.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor? Yes, go ahead. Councilwoman Cassidy?
Thank you. So basically, you guys already have the property, and this is something that you guys could move forward with regardless, but you're utilizing this to help us out on our comprehensive plan?
Twofold, yes. We definitely want to help out on the comprehensive plan. We're going through our financing right now, so we're trying to overcome that hurdle.
However, the comprehensive plan is still not complete, and we've not seen what the AMI index is, or what numbers need to be where in regards to housing. So I'm a little bit like cart before the horse here.
Madam Mayor, I think I call her hand up, but I'll have a follow-up question afterwards.
Thank you. I wanted to also reiterate, so the 68 townhomes and the cottage-style units, they have just had a pre-application meeting with us. They're not ready for a building permit. The Beatty Square project is about ready for issuance, but townhomes and the cottage units are a separate parcel, separate project.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that.
Council-
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So on the unit that has the Boys and Girls Club, that's the one that was specifically in mention for applying for the grant, and that's going to be one complex that's already in motion.
Right.
And- And I believe this is brought up, I'm surprised we're getting this so late, because it was brought up months and months ago, as far as looking towards seeing if there's a way to do a grant program to do that ability to donate the bottom part towards the Boys and Girls Club, which would be a huge donation for the community for a complex that's already going up. Otherwise, we do see, like what we see in Burlington, in my opinion, and that's units that are being built on top of retail space that's not being rented out. And so, in this case, it would be something that would be utilized for the benefit of the community for childcare and the Boys and Girls Club, and that's why I'm for it, for sure.
But for how long? Do we have that on paper? For how long is that going to be a Boys and Girls Club? And, you know, what if, what if, pick your business, a big-time business wants to come in, Outback Steakhouse, something like that, and they have a year left on their Boys and Girls Club lease? Well, you know, we just helped you get $750,000 through EDASC. And what's our return on investment? And will all that be available to us to see when we go to, if EDAS says yes, we will give this $750,000? We're going to see everything, right, in writing, so we can vote our conscience on this, whether or not we feel like it's a square deal or not?
If I may, Madam Mayor, what are we investing? We're putting time with the city to fill out an application. Are we putting any money towards this?
No.
Yeah, so, I don't know what we're looking like our investment is or the money that we're going to see in return on this. I think the grant, if I understand it correctly, specifies the time that the donation has to be in place, the length, and just like the RPFs we send forth or the contracts that we have. So, that's, it's a pretty timely length of time, from what I understand. Maybe you can clarify.
Do you know, Garrett, how long this would be in place? Is there a certain length of time? Is there an end?
Minimum 10 years. Our goal is to have the Boys and Girls Club in there for the entire length of the project. So, if we could have them in for 50 years, we'd love to have that.
That was going to be my question. Would you be providing a long-term lease for the Boys and Girls Club? Because, you know, where they are now in Seidra Woolley, I think it's long-term with the school district, right? And they probably charge them nothing, so like a dollar a year. I mean, would you be renting it to them, or?
So, we haven't figured that out yet. We're still working with Ron, the CEO, trying to figure out if we're going to either condoise it or have a largely reduced operational expense that we just cover as part of our additional portion to contributing to get them into the building.
Well, I appreciate the need. I know the Boys and Girls Club is often overwhelmed with the number of kids they have, but I do agree that some of the details still elude me, so that would be useful to know more of those.
Right, and in all fairness, Garrett, you said you received this request-
Yesterday.
Yesterday, and they approached us today at 2:30. So, and we-
And this is an application for the grant, not for the grant. And once the application goes through, it comes back to the council for further review and to understand the details of what that grant actually came back to, what they're going to actually fund, what it looks like with the Boys and Girls Club. So, it's not approving the building of anything. It's simply saying, yes, go forward and apply for the grant, and so we can have better details on understanding what we're going to be doing.
That's correct. If I could just jump in for a second, you're right. If this grant is successful, it would come back to council with a request for approval and to proceed. So, they still have a ways to go. Application has to go through review. It's a competitive process, and we'll wait and see if they're successful. Also, just to be clear, this grant is not for the Boys and Girls Club necessarily. It's for the infrastructure that's required for the project itself. And then, oh, gosh, there was a third, oh, and to address your question, we have preliminary data on our housing and what the needs are for going forward. That's, we've had a several meetings, so I'm sort of getting scrambled here, but that will be coming back to you in a presentation shortly on housing, and we'll be talking about that as well. So, while we are talking about the housing, at that presentation, they'll be reviewing the grant application. So, hopefully, everything comes together like that.
At the end of the day, from my perspective, I think it's great to try to talk about the Boys and Girls Club, and you want to do a good thing for the community. However, this is not for the Boys and Girls Club. This is an ask by a developer to the city to apply for a grant, in all reality, to promote, or not necessarily promote, but to invest in the developer as part of the community. And there's no guarantee as of yet as to the fact that this is actually going to benefit the Boys and Girls Club completely as a whole for a period of six months or 60 years. And so, just looking from the perspective of taxpayers and the precedent that it sets as a council and to the community and the precedent and the outlook that it can create in all of that, I think that that is, the optics is a little bit sketchy to me, being that this came at 2:30, we have nothing in front of us, and, you know, we are, it's an ask to go through the city to get funds, and it's not open to other developers for us to do that. Is that something that the city is going to then open up and allow other developers to come in and do on a regular basis?
This happens once a year, but it is something that I think, this is the first year that affordable housing projects are eligible for application, so it's brand-new to everybody, including the county. But, yeah, in future years, I think if we go forward with this, it would make sense to open this up-
We're also competing against ourselves, though. Because we've got two grant asks, and-
So, other, not the housing aspect of this grant program, but others still go to the city to ask them to help with that grant application. So, would we be shutting down the grant application? Because what it's done is it's opened up a division for that grant application for the affordable housing side. But if it's also used in other areas that, previous to this opening, would we say we're not doing any of them? I mean, are we shutting down the whole grant? I mean, is that the idea? Wouldn't we be discriminating if we stopped just for that aspect of that grant program when it's encompassed more within that grant? We didn't write up the program. We didn't ask to have that added in, but-
No, and as I just said, we're actually kind of competing against ourselves because we have two grants. However, this is an ask for the community in and of itself, because we're believing that what's going to happen is that there are going to be units opened up to people at, you know, 80% AMI, and that it's also going to provide the daycare that is needed that the Boys and Girls Club are going to run.
Which might not, or may, yeah.
So, I mean, that's kind of what you're weighing there.
Definitely. I, we were going to talk about the comprehensive plan, which was pretty extensive, and we saw some in the packet tonight. A lot of it, I think, most of the council, if not all the council, really disagrees with. A lot of the rezoning around, the tax advantage to developers that would be taken from the other citizens, all that stuff. I think there's a lot of discussion with the council compared to what comprehensive plan's rolling through. So, I try not to add the two together, and that's not even kind of what I'm looking at. But, yeah. I do, the way I thought is that grant application does go to all these people. This is one that came in to ask to have that done.
Councilman Burns?
I know this particular aspect of the grant is new, but have we denied any developers or organizations in the past helping them do the pass-through like this?
We've not had this scenario play out before. This is the first time, since the first time the counties had this open since state law changed to allow for affordable housing development. So, we've not denied anybody at this point.
Okay, well, I was more thinking of any other aspects of these types of grants.
Not that I'm aware of, but I, I mean-
We're not, we wouldn't be doing something that we've refused someone else. We haven't turned away any other organization.
I don't know, maybe this is-
Well, we've known about this for five minutes.
The minutia, but we have, we have put in a grant and gave it to the Boys and Girls Club. That's how they actually got started here in Seidra Woolley. So, I mean, there is some, yeah, history of that. It was a small grant, but it was enough to get them going for a year.
Well, and for a developer, for a huge project, this is not as big of a grant as it might sound to you or I for personal funds. So, I am perfectly fine with passing this tonight, giving them the opportunity to apply and seeing a lot more detail and having a lot of time to look at how this is going to play out if they are approved for it. Because I definitely want the opportunity to have one or two touches where we actually read through the entire proposal, get to ask a lot of questions of the detail. Because I get right now, a grant application does not mean that they're actually going to get the funds. It merely means we're offering them the opportunity to have a chance at them. We're not signing a deal right now and just saying, okay, it's done, no more steps for us. There's a lot left beyond this, so I'm perfectly fine with giving them the chance.
Councilman Cock?
All right.
I'm sorry, you've been-
Yes, I guess I'll second that. Is that a motion? No.
He made one earlier.
I don't know if a second is needed. I'll second, if not already second, simply because I think we need more affordable housing, and I'm a huge supporter of the Boys and Girls Club. But I will say, what has been raised, the issue of the private developer, is something that should probably be addressed going forward in the comprehensive plan. So, we have a system in place, so it's not picking and choosing winners and losers, which, you know, we kind of could be easily accused of in that case. But I think it's, I think it's worth a pass-through application, and it does some good things.
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points. You guys have all made, you guys have all made great points, you know, and this is kind of one of those things where, you know, we have one available year. We have maybe two major apartment complexes going up left in the city, but they're both by the same developer that's asking for this right now. One of the things I take the biggest issue with is I haven't had, I haven't had time to even read what grant that they're applying for, that we're saying, yeah, okay. Because maybe, maybe you were told not the right thing today, Charlie, when they brought it to your attention at 2:00. Maybe they're not lying, but maybe they didn't read all the fine details, and that's why it's getting to us so late, that are we, what guarantees do we have that if, you know, we just pass this because we say, hey, it's Love Boys and Girls Club, or if it's for the YMCA, or if it's for, you know, if you take the name out of it, what it's for, which I'd like to kind of do that moving forward, because we put a lot of names into a lot of things. I like to just take the name out of it and say, hey, this is what we're looking at. This is the cost savings. EDASC is willing to pay for it. All we have to do is be part of the application process. And then, the other part, this wasn't in our packet. This is the second thing we're voting on tonight that wasn't in our packet. And I'm not accusing anybody of anything other than that I don't like voting on stuff that I haven't been able to read. I think that it is a massive disservice to the people that we represent, and I understand that sometimes we have to get something done that came to us late. But I, did the county open this up on Monday?
This has been open for a little while. We had, I had a discussion with staff on Friday about it. So, it got dropped, and we picked it up, and that's why it wasn't in the packet. That's why we're talking with you about it tonight on, that was the other two grants, and then, obviously, this one has kind of changed itself over the course of the last week or so and turned into the request you're hearing tonight.
Did you read it?
Actually, the last 24 hours. It kind of changed within the last 24 hours.
Even in the last three hours, it's changed.
So, you've read it, so you know that we get a vote on this again if it comes back?
I have not seen their application. Their application will have that tomorrow. I have read the county's guidance on this grant.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking about, the county's.
Very familiar with that.
So, we do get, we do get a second and a third look at this if we have two readings of it?
If you allow us to apply, and if it's successful, then we have to come back for grant award to the council. And so, at that point, you can review it in more detail. We can take two readings. We can take whatever time we need to review it.
Okay, because precedence was talked about with Councilwoman Diamond, and I completely agree with that. But the other precedence I'd like to caution everybody about is voting on something that we haven't read. We can get assurances, but I'd caution you to, and I, I'll be, I'll be willing to move forward tonight with caution with, Charlie Bush's, said he read the county's guidance on it, and we will get a second and a third look on this. But we're setting two different precedences tonight that I want to be clear that I am not in favor of setting. So, I, I will vote that we move forward with caution, but I like to read things before I vote on it.
Another question. So, I mean, the townhome project, it sounds like the permitting process and stuff, it has already gone through. RG Group intends to move forward with this regardless of what we choose to do tonight in regards to moving forward with that grant process, I would assume. Is that correct?
It's the company's goal.
Thank you.
And Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I just want to echo. I don't want to beat anybody up for this, but I, too, really, last-minute things like that, I totally get that things come in, but it does make me very anxious and not sleep at night when we have to make decisions like this. So, I just want to say, state that, and I appreciate everybody's good conversation on this, and look forward to, I guess, what we can make of it.
Go ahead, Councilman Lavaca.
I would agree with that, and I think in this case, with the application process of something that's existed for some time, it's just added in another dynamic to it. We could, I mean, it would have been wise to just add the county's structure to the packet, maybe even in late note tonight. As far as with the planning adding in, which I didn't know about either, but request for grant match would only save us that much money, and so, that's pretty low-hanging fruit on that end, too. But, awesome, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Garrett? Thank you very much for stepping forward and answering the question.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
So, how do you want this motion to read?
I think it would simply be a motion to authorize the mayor to submit a grant application to the county to support public infrastructure related to the Beatty Square project, not to exceed $750,000.
Support public infrastructure, what did you say?
To support the Beatty Square project in the amount not to exceed $750,000.
Yeah, okay, I got that. Okay. So, we have a motion by Burns, seconded by Councilman Cock, to approve authorization for the mayor to sign the grant application that would support the public infrastructure of the Beatty project not to exceed $750,000.
Madam Mayor, one correction, that was Councilmember Lavaca, not Councilmember Burns.
Oh, okay. Not you?
I made the motion to approve the grant process.
My apologies. Okay, I correct that then. Motion was made by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Cock, correct? Okay. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. So, we have two opposed. That is Councilwoman Diamond and Councilman Henderson. Was there anybody else who was opposed? Okay. All right. Five to two, motion carries. All right. Okay, moving on then to council member report. Councilman Lloyd?
I have nothing this week.
Okay. Councilwoman Kestie?
I just have one thing. I had a constituent reach out to me about SCAT, and I reached out to Charlie, and I'm going to pass on his information. It was very enlightening about the bus stops and the time, timing issue, and I really think that he can make a difference. I'll be sharing that with you guys.
And may I make one request? So, I actually sit on that board, so I would be the one that you would probably make, give me that information. We can have that discussion, and I can take that to the board then.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I was just discussing it with Charlie to get it to whomever it needed to go to.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilwoman Diamond?
I just have a couple of things here. I've been getting continued complaints about traffic congestion on Cook Road and Highway 20. I know I repeat myself here, but when constituents make comments to me, it's my job to bring it forward regardless. So, I get continued complaints about that. Several constituents irritated that we would be discussing reducing miles traveled when we don't have the industry or economy driving the jobs and opportunities to support that. when we don't have the industry or economy driving the jobs and opportunities to support that. So again, I explained that that was part of the comprehensive plan process, and that was required. However, that is, in fact, a true comment that's coming from constituents. Without a thriving, growing economy, it makes it incredibly hard to expect the residents that are living here, especially when we are putting in more high-density housing that people are, again, continuing to complain to me about, that we don't have the jobs to support that. So if they're living here, how are they supposed to get to and from work and reduce their miles? So I'm passing that along. I've also received a couple complaints from constituents on Ferry Street and Township, people walking their dogs, and people not picking up after their dogs. So at minimum, if there is a way to send out a reminder on social media to clean up after your animals, or put out a sign or something. I know that there's a garbage can that was put out on the trail, maybe there's something that can go out along there, but, along the way. But I've received two different complaints this week. It's very nice, people are out walking, that's wonderful reminder to clean it up because people are leaving it in other people's yards. And on a more positive note, on Saturday, there will be the Second Annual Bob Hickman Memorial Jamboree at Janicke Fields. They are currently expecting 32 local Little League softball teams, and opening ceremonies start at 8:45 in the morning. So if anybody wants to head out to that and support your local youth softball programs, there will be 32 local teams coming in from Skagit and Island Counties. Outside of that, again, on Tuesday evening, the Cedar Woolly High School baseball team will be hosting Youth Night, that's Tuesday, the 29th. They will take on Lakewood, there is no admission fee, and they will have free hot dogs for the youth that show up wearing a baseball jersey. And they can run the bases with the Cubs after the game. So if you have any youth kids, grandkids, want to take them out to the baseball game, support our local high school kids, and let them run the bases as a possible future Cub one day, that would be really fun for those kids. Also, youth soccer registration has opened. It is currently available online through May 31st. And it is also, there is an in-person, some people really still do like in-person social settings. There is an in-person sign-up at the middle school on Sunday, the 27th, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., where you can actually get your child uniform fitted, and talk to somebody, and pay them in person. So if you're interested in that, in any of those youth activities currently going on or signing yours up, all of that is available. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last night, I attended a meeting with Thomas and Nicole, and Ashton isn't here, but it wasn't a very well-attended meeting, but there was a lot of good information that happened there. I also had a lot of, I shared the post about a week ago on my own Facebook page, and I immediately got drug in the comments, because everybody's asking me why the city would want them to drive less miles and all that other stuff. And I said, those are great points, and I would love for you guys to come to the meeting, but they didn't, but I digress. I would like to point out that there are going to be a couple more opportunities for public comment on that portion of the comp plan, and there's going to be at least two more meetings, I think, one with the Planning Commission, and then it'll come before council, and then Planning Commission, and then back, right? Yeah, okay, so there's still a lot of time to talk about that element of the comp plan. And the other question I had, there was a little bit of additional information underneath your report, Charlie, and I was wondering if, and it's about a funding request, and I'm wondering if it'd be appropriate to add this to the executive session to discuss a funding request matter? Because I just need some clarification on it, because it's in an email now.
Yeah, we cannot, unless Emily Gildner, who's online tonight, says it's okay, but we typically cannot discuss something like that in an executive session. So you and I could talk offline, or if the council wanted to have further discussion about it, then you could potentially somehow work it into this evening's discussion.
Okay, could I just email you, and Nikki?
Absolutely.
And Thomas, probably, or Nicole? Be a Thomas or Nicole question, too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a response to that, too. I'll talk later, yeah. Councilman Cock?
I just had a question, well, Bill's not here, but maybe one of y'all know. I saw in the Skagit Valley Herald that, I guess, the county's accepting recycled glass at the transfer stations. Does that also apply to our curbside recycling? Because I know, didn't we kind of infer to people that they weren't accepting glass anymore? So is, should we let people know if there's a change?
I thought it went out in the flyer, the new flyer for...
I just saw the story like yesterday.
I'm just not sure what to tell people, because they saw it in the paper.
Yeah, and it was, you know, so it's something we need to consider that if, to let people know, yes or no, what do I do? I mean, you know, my wife is pretty steamed that she can't recycle the glass.
Yeah, let's check the schedule that we sent out, the yearly schedule for garbage and recycling pickup. I thought that it was mentioned in there.
Well, you could also put something on the city website, because, you know, a lot of people saw that story in the Herald, so...
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday.
Yes, sir, we'll look into that.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Just one, I suspect we all got the email about this, and I heard about it one, from one other person. Possibility of enforcing the no bikes in the skateboard park. Sounds like that causes some damage to the concrete over time. And I know that Councilmember Lavaca has brought up the idea of possibly a BMX park at some point in the city. I'm wondering if that's something that we shouldn't look at doing at a piece of property the city might own somewhere, where we really just need some dirt and a bulldozer to make a BMX park, and that might get them off of the skate park, especially if it's causing damage to the concrete, because that would be expensive to fix.
Yeah, we had had discussion about that, we had, when we had the Parks Committee. So it's something that got dropped, and the Parks Committee went away during COVID. So it's great that you're bringing that forward. It was also brought forward, though, by a former council member. He actually wrote a letter, I think, to all of us, an email to all of us, yeah.
That's why I brought it up, I figured public clarity, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So another email that came through was about potholes, of course, and I went around some of our inner-city streets, and they are pretty rough. They're very rough, go by the high school, there's some pretty good pitting around. And so, one of the things that I was working with on the Public Works Committee with Bill was to actually have something that we have a QR code or something on the website that people can say, hey, this street, there's some potholes, can we look at getting those? And the more people that bring those up, the more attention it gets to those areas. And then, how are we allocating money towards fixing those, and we have so many projects going on? Obviously, our impact fees for growth aren't really covering the need for traffic improvements, which we've all been discussing quite a bit. However, we are seeing, you know, the road degradation getting pretty bad. I think where I live, on Evans and Ball, it's pretty small, it just got re-chipped. It's going to take a lot of traffic once we start doing work on Jones and John Linder and the roundabout, things like that. So all of these streets around are possibly in need, so something to think about. Another thing that came to my attention was that there was somebody that was selling some fruit, mainly oranges, on Township and State Street. I already sent the email out to Thomas and to the chief about just looking at that. I had seen them there a number of times, but like a lemonade stand, I didn't really think too much of it. But the more and more that they were there, and other people were bringing it up, hey, is that something that they have a business license to do? The city getting taxes for that kind of stuff? Do we know it's safe, the product they're selling is safe? It's a little bit different than a kid selling lemonade. And so, I do want to make sure that if we have people setting up vending machines, and if officers see that type of stuff, they can actually ask to see if we can get somebody, a code enforcer over there, to make sure that they do have a business license, at the very least. Make sure it's safe. And then, the last thing that came up was, there was some new regulations from the federal government through an EO on the state's responsibilities with Regulations and Climate Act. And so, I did send a letter over to the DOJ to ask for some clarity on various things, especially with PSC in regards to us, it affects us with the best station, it affects us with, you know, our comprehensive plan, which we've already spent $500,000 through consulting fees that was granted to us by taxpayer money to figure out how to reduce traffic with electric vehicles, most likely, or something like that. So it does affect our community through taxes in a huge way. So I did send a letter out to them. I spent a long time on the phone with them today and got nowhere, trying to understand, where are we as a community, because it affects us as a 13,000-person community in a huge way, if the state's not in accordance with maybe the new direction. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. So just a couple of things, first off, the Tulip Art Exhibition that the city hosted through the local shop was a huge success, and there were people really that came from all over, not just within the state, but outside the state, and even from other countries. So first time that this has ever happened, we're hoping that we can keep this going, and it was just, it was a lot of fun to be a part of that. Last night, I went to the high school for their CTS class, the Class S. They are doing some wonderful work there, and Councilwoman Kestie was also there. She volunteers with the journalism class, but it was really great. There were three documentaries that were provided. One was on the city, one was on recovery, and the other was on the Latino community, all of them well-done, and all of them quite poignant. And the last thing is that, if you haven't heard, the governor refused to sign, he would not sign the 1%, 2%, 3% property tax. That is off the table, so that won't be happening. So the concerns that the council expressed, your worries are laid bare. You don't have to worry about that, governor's not going to sign it, so... Okay, that's it for me, moving on to public comments. It is 8:40, and I will open it up for public comment. Is there anybody in the chamber who would like to give public comment? I do believe I saw Mr. DeYoung come in, and, did you sign in? I think you did, didn't you, I saw you doing something, yeah? So if you'd like to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Carl DeYoung, and I live at 1101 Fidalgo Street. And so, good evening, Mayor Johnson, council members, directors and chiefs, and hi, Woody. I just wanted to thank the council for inviting the public for input on vehicle miles traveled, the VMT, and taking this issue seriously. The real opportunity to speak up, this is a real opportunity to speak up for working families here in Cedar Woolly. As someone who has lived and worked in this community for years, I know that most of our residents don't drive long distances because they want to. They drive because they have to. We're a working-class town. Many of our people head to Bellingham, Everett, or Seattle every day to put food on the table. And for most, there simply isn't any other option. That's why I want to call to attention to where this VMT policy discussion really began. It wasn't born in communities like ours, it came out of Olympia, driven largely by the 51 legislators who represent King County. These folks work to solve congestion and emissions in the Seattle metro area, and that's understandable. But those same rules don't always apply here in the 39th District, and specifically in Cedar Woolly, where only three legislators represent communities like ours. One-size-fits-all approach to VMT doesn't account for the realities of our region. Skagit County has already seized the highest per person driving rates in this state, up to 30,000 miles per year, and that's according to the Washington Department of Transportation's own numbers. And that's not because we're careless, but because of our land use, our job locations, and transit access are fundamentally different. Even so, we can be part of the solution, but only if the state acknowledges our circumstances. So to start with, encouraging more local job opportunities, so people don't have to commute 60, 90 miles a day just to make a living. Support affordable housing near transit-oriented development, where services are walkable and streets are already built. Working regionally to improve transit options for commuters, even in low-density areas. Investing in safe walkways and biking paths, so short local trips don't have to rely on a car. Washington State already sets VMT reduction targets, RCW 4701440. The path forward must respect our local differences. I appreciate what this council is listening, not just to what the state says, but what Cedar Woolly actually needs. So let's work together to find solutions that reduce unnecessary driving, protect our environment, and most importantly, respect the daily lives of the people who live here. Thank you, and I will submit this to the Director of Finance for records, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else within the council who would like to make comment? And I see we have somebody online, I do know Joe. Joe, do you want to give public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Joe Consor here, and really appreciate your time this evening. I really appreciate your deep interest in all things human services and attempting to enable recovery. I wasn't able to watch all the briefings, but it is very much appreciated your attention and questions on that, because one of the things I really appreciate about living here in Cedar Woolly is we don't have the drug problems that places do ourselves do, and not just a certain place, it starts with S and ends with et al. But that's not why I called. I called because I am deeply concerned about this long-range transit plan out of Skagit Transit, as this mayor knows, as Councilmember Kestie knows, and I'm sure some of you also know. It's written by well-intended people, based out of Seattle. But going over the schedules in Appendix C is extremely concerning to me. It will not reduce vehicle miles traveled for Skatetonians. For those that can drive, they will want to drive. For those that don't, it's going to roll back a lot of our freedom and access. And I am literally calling up the long-range transit plan, and the last trip for the Route 301 from the airport to Cedar Woolly leaves Chaconet Park and Ride in Burlington, which is our next-door neighbor, at 6:40 p.m. It pulls into the Cedar Woolly Park and Ride at 7:15 p.m. Currently, we have services that run until 8:45 p.m. And I don't really think we, I think these schedules should be of great concern. Obviously, I put my concerns in the long-range form, let me check the time. I don't know how much time I've got left on the clock, but...
You have over a minute.
Thank you. I just want to be respectful of your time as well. You know, the last trip back to Skagit County pulls in Route 305, connecting Mount Vernon to Cedar Woolly pulls in at 8:08 at night. I would hope this council reviews this plan. There are already some changes to guarantee service to the public library, which I appreciate that the change will be made. But I would really encourage this council to review that plan and comment on it. One last thing, I've offered to your mayor to be her proxy, since already we're seeing county commissioners and elected officials as proxies. If this mayor wants to go that route, I ask for your support. If not, that's okay, because if state law passes and is signed by Governor Ferguson, there will be slots for two disabled people to serve on the Skagit Transit Board. However, if I'm elected, I will serve all the people of Skagit County, not just the people I like, which is quite a few. I want to thank you for your public service and attention to detail. My time's up, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? Yes, come on in. Just give your name and maybe how you're affiliated with Cedar, thank you.
My name is Celeste Frisbee, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was born and raised here, except for five years, I lived in upstate New York, kindergarten through the fourth grade. I live just outside of town, about three miles. So I just have some thoughts for the city council, and they all kind of tie together. The first one is on our built environment in our community. So like I said, I grew up here, I'm fifth-generation Skatetonian, and I believe the built environment has a significant impact on the way we live, and the way we identify ourselves, and the way we interact with one another, and also mental health and prosperity in our community. And right now, I see that our town seems like it's at a crossroads. It's very confusing to me when I drive through town, because it's starting to look like an unidentifiable town to me. It's very confusing to me when I drive through town because it's starting to look like an unidentifiable town to me. We have a lot of vacant spaces. We have vacant spaces in our downtown core, commercial land. And then simultaneously, I'm seeing other major projects happening. I just found out somehow that there's a new hotel, which appears to me to be in a very odd place. If I were going to visit a town and pay for a nice hotel room, I would want to be within walking distance of actual amenities, which our downtown core desperately needs visitors to come and spend time there. So I'm confused as a citizen here of how the plans are coming together for our town and how there's cohesion with the city's identity. And also leaning into the discussion earlier on the grant proposal for the developer who's here. When I see these developments going in, my intuition is that buildings are happening to us. They're not being curated by us and by the community, creating our sense of place and creating our own future identity. And when I think of the places that people spend money to travel and get on airplanes and fly over oceans, they go because of the built environment, old buildings and unique features. And so I think Sidro really has a lot of that, but I'm very really concerned about what that's looking like going forward. And when I see that grant process, I've worked in a lot of nonprofit and corporate, and I think there's real benefits to the city being a conduit to partnering with developers because they become effectively a thought partner. Whereas if we take the situation with Bass right now, where they completely circumvented local jurisdictions and are planning to build a major infrastructure project, where we as local people who live here and are going to be affected by it have basically no voice. So to me, my thought is I would welcome those developers to work through a grant process. My time up.
Go ahead and finish your thoughts.
Okay. So that the city can be a thought partner. And then I would also look at the example of the North Star, which to me is an amazing example of a community entity that is also government-partnered, where there is a collaboration going on. And it's mind-boggling, mind-boggling to me that there's $50 million going into that project in a matter of a few years. And that that is really a coalition of what I heard volunteer people. And I think that we as a community have a lot of capacity to do a lot of great things that can start really small if we are actually engaging the people in our community. We have a lot of people in our community across the broad area that Sidro really represents that have educational backgrounds, experience, and really talents that I think if they knew how to get engaged, they would get engaged if there was a facilitated process. And the last thing I would say, coming from also a background of being a public school teacher and out-of-school-time program director through 21st Century for the City of Washington, grant program is, when I think of that development with whether Childcare Boys and Girls Club is like, again, where I don't even know where that building is being built. I didn't hear that part of the presentation or recognize where that building is happening. But my thought is like, how does that connect those children and their daily activities and their experience in that Boys and Girls Club? What are the proximate assets that would be used by children so they're not just in a building? So I think that I would like our community to get more depth into these things because once we build things, they're there for a long time. And there's plenty of examples on the internet of really bad design that really long-term impact communities. So thank you for your time, and I'm complete.
Thank you, Liz.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, hearing none, it's 8:53. I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment. And there is no unfinished business present at this time, so we're going to move into new business. And the first one is the proposed amendments to Chapter 2 of the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Element. I believe, is this the first to read?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we are joined this evening by our consultant team from Facet. This is a presentation regarding the land use element for the Comprehensive Plan. There's a recommendation included here, this is in your packet, to include new and amended goals and policies as well as changes to the background information based on recent land capacity analysis and housing allocations by income level. So the purpose of this meeting tonight is to provide you with an overview. And then we also welcome your feedback, comments. This is a work in progress, so tonight we're not asking for a decision, but we are providing you with this information. We did go through this with the Planning Commission at their meeting last week. And a memo that I distributed to you on Monday is a summary of the comments that they did have. So with that, I would like to introduce Donna, who is with Facet, to continue this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me. It's great to be here again. So what, we met with the Planning Commission last week, as Tom mentioned, and we went through an initial set of draft revisions, a very early draft, to attempt to get more in compliance with the Growth Management Act, some of the new regulations, and also reflect some feedback that we got from the public meetings that we've had to date. It was a great conversation. As you know, the land use element serves as the umbrella document, you know, for the rest of the plan. And it feeds into all the other elements from transportation to parks to housing. And so it's a very important element, and it's important that we go through this carefully. And so let me just, I'm going to just highlight some of the changes from the last version from 2016. It's in the memo that you got, but I'll just quickly go over them. Is, so we shortened the introduction and background information and proposed to move it into the back into the appendix. There'll be an appendix to the document, Volume 2. The section describing the existing land uses and land capacity has been updated to reflect current data. We provide a description of new requirements for housing allocations based on income levels, which is a new requirement. There are new policies to address VMT reduction and environmental justice and a new policy addressing battery storage sites and other hazard areas. And we also have new policies on the TMCO district, including a recommendation to create, turn it into an actual zone instead of an overlay. A new policy allowing for small-scale manufacturing and designated commercial zones or corridors. And we removed the Showa Master Plan policies because they're duplicative. They're already in the Showa Master Program. So those were the kind of the major changes we made. If you had a chance to look through it, I know it was a lot. You'll see that we've made some grammatical changes or we eliminated redundant language. But what we really want from you is, some other jurisdictions may wait until to bring a whole document to the council and at the end of the process, but it's really helpful to get your feedback this early on to see if there are any red flags or big concerns that you might have and so that at the end of the process, there's no big surprises. So I don't have a presentation tonight, and we're happy to continue this discussion. I would love to take some of your feedback back to the Planning Commission if you have, from what you've been able to review in the document.
Go ahead, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for coming down tonight. I know you've been sitting there for a long time. I really did a lot of skimming through this. It is a very long document to read and knowing that, knowing that it's not something that we even come close to taking action on, I appreciate your guys' feedback. And I know the Planning Commission does a lot of hard work, and they do a lot of the boring reading and the heavy lifting so we can kind of go through and hit the high spots here. One of the things that I did notice that I don't like, and this is just my, just my personal input, is under the goal LU1 to safely accommodate population growth without causing urban sprawl, it's under Policy LU13, and you struck single-family residential development from that section. It's on page 88 of the.
Oh, got it.
Of the slide.
Okay.
Show. So it says to propose removing single-family from this policy to open up flexibility for accommodating housing targets in different income brackets where appropriate. It's my understanding, under the Growth Management Act, that our, when we are annexing property, if we choose to annex property as a city, and if we have a landowner that's willing to let us annex their property, there's a few different decisions that need to be made there with all the stakeholders and including whether or not future development can pay for adding the infrastructure that needs to go in there. With that being said, it's my understanding that under the Growth Management Act, when we're annexing something within our UGA, it needs to be a minimum of R4 designation, which we don't really have listed in the city. We have R5, R7, R1, and 15, and then 35, right? Yeah, somewhere in there. So taking, striking single-family out of there without, without offering a replacement for what that means, whether it's like, whether we're going to make it mixed-use, commercial and residential if we're annexing it or whatnot. I understand the desire not to have urban sprawl. I also understand the desire to not overdensify. And so with that being said, I think if we were to be annexing property, it should be, it should be under careful consideration of the Planning Commission and the stakeholder being the landowner. And then it would be, it would be up to the council's prerogative on would we start at the lowest density and then as it gets parceled off, as it gets, as it gets short-platted, then we figure out, okay, what are we going to, what are we going to do here? But the striking of the single-family, that kind of worries me that we're going to jump straight into like R7 or R15 if we're going to annex something. So that, that's my concern, as that being part of the, part of the plan. I don't know if I want to make that policy or not.
Okay, yeah. And that's understandable. Yeah, and generally when properties within the urban growth area are the lowest density, and they get higher as you go into the center. But I'll pass that on to them, your concerns.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman LaVaca.
Oh, thank you very much. I do appreciate you working on this, and I do encourage the community to, to take a look at it. Even the draft sessions can always be found online on the website under Council Meetings and then the Packet, and it's available. So there's a lot of opportunity to, you know, right now, build out this 20-year plan that's going to be right in front of us. And I think we've had some really good meetings so far, kind of describing, kind of back and forth of what the council's view is as representatives of the cities or of the city and the people here. As far as getting more towards that concept, I'm looking in here and I'm wondering how close we are. I know that we're trying to meet the state requirements at the same time for densification. But there was a lot of rezoning to R15s spread out through the community. There was a lot of, you know, areas of annexing or densification or even annexing without explanation of, of infrastructure like Henderson was saying, Councilman Henderson was saying. So are we getting closer to that? Or is this draft is based on what you guys have right now? Is that still on the, on the discussion topic of what our views were?
You're talking about rezoning? It's possible. And at the next meeting, we're going to be talking about housing and what our housing allocations are for the city. We, Matt Covert, who is with my team, wasn't able to be here tonight. He's at the PAU conference. But he's looked at it, and I think he's figured out a way to limit the number of rezones, mainly through your PRD regulations that'll provide some flexibility for additional density in those zones and also your middle housing, well, your cottage ordinance that you just adopt, not yet adopted or will be adopting.
Just got recommended for approval by Planning Commission.
That's right.
You'll be seeing that shortly.
That's right, sorry, sorry. That's going to help. And also the provision for accessory dwelling units and other middle forms of housing. So I think the number of properties that may, that we were looking at for rezoning before has gone down quite a bit. And Matt will provide more information on that at the next meeting.
Awesome. I do look forward to seeing that. I know that a while back, when I first cailed on, we, we basically voted that we would not be involved in the actual building on those zones. So if somebody wanted to build a house or apartment or business, we're not able as a council to vote them up or down because it would be engaged. But we can vote on the zoning. So my concern, as even what was expressed tonight and other community members, is that is there a plan set forth about how we build or what the future is? And so looking at all those rezones for R15s, it could be any type of apartment style in those areas, but we would pretty much see in time apartments at every one of those that get into this comprehensive plan. So I'm thankful that you guys are looking at that, and you guys heard, heard from us on that. And I look forward to seeing what that map looks like.
Yeah, and I just want to add, we're, we're looking for any other creative solution that we can help meet your housing allocations in term, and also like programs. We had discussion tonight about working with developers or partnering with developers who might be interested in working with a city to provide a number of units for that are below 80 or 50 of AMI. If, for example, the city were to provide land or, you know, there might be a way, there's other ways to try to, to reach that besides rezones.
It is, it is a challenging topic because to reach down to that 20% to 40%, you know, 40% to 60% and 80%, we're basically subsidizing. So the taxpayer is subsidizing developers. The cost to develop's high. It's not as high as, as doing, as we talked about the nonprofit development, but development's high. And so to build that, that within what the state's requiring us is basically asking the taxpayer money, taxpayers to subsidize a major portion of developers and to rezone our, our properties and then to request state funding from our property taxes to go into that. So it is, it is a catch-22, and it's, that's exactly what's being asked of us through, through the state right now. So, yeah, any kind of creative ideas, like you were saying before, properties that are able to be developed as an R7 or zoned as an R7, maybe they only have a single house on there, that is included in the plan and may never be developed. It just shows the capability of growth. I just don't want to get in a position of subsidizing growth with taxpayer money to meet a, you know, demographic that may exist or may not exist to a certain level.
Anyone else?
I'm trying to find the right words because I feel like we've beaten this dead horse. So I know that you had mentioned that you were listening to the constituents and what they were saying at that meeting. However, we had a really healthy discussion a while back, and I just really hope that you take into account what the council is saying because we're the ones hearing from all the constituents who don't have time to go to these meetings. And we are trying to set forth what is our town going to look like? What do we want to be? And what I keep seeing brought back to us is being forced upon us is not what we're saying at all. So it becomes very irritating to see these things come back and single-family is removed. I just, and I, I think I mentioned this in the last time that we had spoken, that, you know, there's Olympia's way and there's the Woolly Way. And I think that we pretty much beat that into the conversation last time of what we're looking for and what we want this to be for our community. So I just really would like to emphasize that not seeing it, and I wouldn't feel comfortable passing this.
Madam Mayor, if I may touch on that. We do understand your difficult, or I definitely do understand your difficult position because what's being said is if you don't accomplish this criteria of the comp plan, you will no longer receive funding from the Department of Commerce or other departments, grant programs, things like that, because you're not meeting this criteria. So, and as a consultant, you're trying to, you know, build out for the city something that's in, that's within legal standing so that we can still get funding within reason. And so it is a difficult. And so, it is a difficult position to be in, I do understand that. But, I, I would definitely agree with Councilwoman Castillo on having a vision. And, you know, we proposed getting the developers, business leaders, community members together to see, what does this vision even draw out, some conceptual drawings before, over the last couple of years. We really haven't seen that, but that would really be, be helpful. Obviously, it's late in the game for the comprehensive plan, so it is, I do understand where you're coming from, and it's appreciated.
Madam.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, maybe one more thing off to that. Some things are not worth the money selling ourselves out for, so I also want to say that as well.
Well, I was, I was just gonna say, I agree with everything that's being set up here. The last thing we want is to have this community turned into a low-income bedroom community, with no infrastructure and no economy to support it. And what I'm seeing is development, development, high density, high, high density, we have to meet all of these AMI index housing goals, right? And as a whole, of course, we want our community to have good, stable housing, but we also want them, or they need to be able to have the jobs to support themselves in doing it. We can't, as a whole, subsidize everything that comes through, because we're taxing people then, that have been longstanding here, out of their homes. And that's not fair to these people that have lived here for twenty, thirty, forty years, you know, third, fourth, fifth generation, community members. And that's what it's feeling like the state is trying to push the cities to do. But, the hard reality is, if you're gonna add that many heads, how many jobs are we going to be adding to this? Because the jobs within the walking communities of the urban district, or of the, of some of these other higher-density housing developments are not there. The, the income levels provided do not provide the type of income necessary to support the housing that they in fact live in. And so, you know, what kind of economic development or industry would actually be available in order to do that? It goes right back into the mileage and all of the other aspects of it, right? It's all, it's all turnkey. In order for some of the people to live in the apartments that have currently been built at twenty-four hundred dollars a month, they cannot go walk to the McDonald's, or the credit union, and work there, and, and expect to be able to support that with the additional costs and increases of utilities, and whatever else they might have, you know, in, in, in their lives, and what they need to support. And so, it's, it's incredibly hard to try to take out the single-family homes and all of that stuff, and say that we need to allocate for all of this additional higher-density stuff, when our, our economy isn't supporting it. Because the economy needs to be, you know, we need to be able to provide a healthy tax revenue to support our first responders, and the infrastructure necessary to support and provide the proper services for our community members as well. And so, I don't want that stuff to get lost in, lost in transition, as we're talking about all of this stuff, because it seems to be a, a good situation, or it sounds good to say that we can, or we were going to do these things, right? To make, to make Olympia happy, but at the end of the day, we are Cedar-Woolley, and we have limited capabilities in regards to what we can provide, and we are landlocked. And so, we, we have so much infrastructure, we have so much excess revenue, we have so, you know, all of these sorts of stuff, sorts of things going on, and so there are a lot of different aspects to consider. And, and having things put in the right place, as was mentioned by a constituent tonight, is, is absolutely key in some of this stuff. And so, we do need to be careful about where we place things, and what they look like, and how people can have access to different things. And, and right now, some areas simply don't look cohesive. And, looking back at old plans and old maps of the Cedar, City of Cedar-Woolley, it was never intended to be an, an urban sprawl, nor was it ever intended to be a high-density location. It was intended to be a, a small, working town, that people felt comfortable raising and living their families in, and, and they're, and really involved in the community, and all those sorts of things. And so, it is, it is really hard for a lot of the community members to see all of the high-density stuff going in, and their taxes going up, and, and all of that sorts of stuff, and the services going, you know, going down in some of their eyes, from the information that I've received. And so, I really don't want to lose sight of all of that, for the possibility of a grant here and there, if that's really what it comes down to. Because it's, to me, it's not worth the health of the community.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Burns?
I share a lot of the concerns that have been spoken tonight. I, I can't tell you how many constituents have scolded me for the apartment buildings that were started before my time. And, I understand the concerns about the cohesion of the city, the walkability, the challenges of trying to plan ahead for, how can we allow building that will help create better flows of traffic and pedestrian walkways, and make it easier for public transit? It is a lot to try to put together. And the concerns about becoming a bedroom community are definitely real. And my wife has to drive to Anacortes for work, I drive to Burlington, Councilmember Cock used to drive to Bellingham, I have another one from Burlington, I think Mount Vernon. You know, we all have to commute, and some of the mileage numbers that I've seen that the state expects just don't make sense to me, the, the laws that they have wanted to do with parking requirements for housing, would make it very challenging for my household, for example, to get to work every day, because we wouldn't be able to have the vehicles for it. But, something I'm curious about that popped into my head as Councilmember Diamond was talking, has anyone ever looked at the numbers for how many jobs are available in Cedar-Woolley, and how many people are within the ages of, you know, eighteen to sixty-five? Like, how far off are we? What kind of, what kind of industry should we be trying to draw in? That's, it's a question that popped into my head, that might not be necessarily relevant to exactly what you're doing, but should be very relevant to what we do when we go forward. Because when we see an opportunity to draw in an industry or a business that maybe fits, fits the niche for that age bracket that we are lacking, or that opportunity, it'd be wonderful to know it. Because that really can go into long-term planning, for us to make sure that we are providing the opportunity for employment for as many people as possible. I mean, there are places like Janneke Industries that employ a lot of people here, that's a lot of people that are in a specific field. And so, understanding the demographics we have, and where we're going, would be wonderful for that as well.
Madam Mayor, if I may. Wasn't there a job, there's a job reported here, I was looking for it. When I read it earlier, and it was saying that we would probably need about thirty-two hundred jobs, if I, if I read that correctly in the draft. And so, that, but it doesn't break it down like what types of jobs, some are retail, some are mechanics, some are trades, some are, you know, professional services and whatnot. But, that, that's, it was in there, and that's, it was a pretty large amount of jobs, and that's what I was looking at. Even if we filled out the Sealand Complex, the Northern State, we're about to have a logging boom, I'm sure, with the EO, that unleashed the logging within the Washington State area for, for reducing lumber cost. We'll probably see a lot of those, but that's a lot of jobs. So, yeah, yeah, it's, it's hard to read that and see that. That's a good question about demographic of jobs, what's actually available in the community, and local communities around, within reason, and then see what, you know, what we can name for.
Councilman Law?
Yeah, I just got a quick little comment. Everybody's talking about traffic, and I just, I'll scratch my head how you're gonna get rid of it. But, ten or twelve years ago, there was a study done, and in there, they just had a, like a two-sentence thing in the report. Twelve years ago, forty-nine percent of the workforce in Cedar-Woolley left town every day to go to work, so they left, they left schedule. Forty-nine percent. That was a, it's gotta be more than forty-nine percent now. I just don't know how you're gonna solve that.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. Great points. Everybody, Joe, that's, that's a good point, too. I'd, I'd like to see what kind of, what kind of industry we would need to get brought in here, had we, if we are able to have that opportunity. And, looking at some of these different elements of the comp plan, you know, with, with the traffic one fresh in my mind from last night, and going over like, a lot of this housing stuff, and base, piggybacking off of what Councilwoman Diamond said, one of, one of the things that really concerns me is that we're gonna have a bunch of people who work and live in Seattle, or the surrounding areas, which are also just as expensive, Bellevue, Redmond, you know, the big markets, Issaquah. They're gonna, they're gonna see how much we're building up here, they're gonna sell their house, and they're gonna come buy ours for pennies on the dollar, off of what they sold their houses for. And they'll have no problem commuting to their, you know, jobs, or their, some of them work in tech. We have a lot of, a lot of work-from-home people now, that, you know, work for SpaceX, Microsoft, you know, you name it, you drive through Redmond, and all you see is, you know, all these different tech companies down there. It's, it's pretty wild. But, that, that's one of the things that, that really concerns me, moving forward with the comp plan, is making sure that as we're, as we're building, as we're developing, we're keeping in mind that, you know, I only have, I only have one child, so he's gonna have to find a place to live. But, what about some of the other people who live in town that have more than one child, that, you know, their sibling, their children aren't gonna both live together? So, you know, you kind of gotta multiply, so you gotta think, well, I need a house for, you know, all three of my kids eventually, because they're gonna want to stay in this community, maybe. I mean, they deserve to, if they want to. And so, that, that's something, you know, and it's a lot to capture. You don't have an easy job, I don't envy it, but, but I appreciate you taking all of our feedback, and, and actually putting it on paper, and, and letting us, you know, chew through it, and kind of see what we like, and the planning commission's doing a great job coming through, and checking everything out for us as well, so. Thanks for letting us share our thoughts.
Councilman Cock?
Just on, observation on economic development, you know, there is some, certainly opportunity up at the Swift Center, which I would hope that the port would, and E-DASK would focus on. Seems like you could put some, just my theory, some high-tech stuff there. We have a kid that works in cybersecurity, and it's, there's zillions of jobs in that field. The, and then there's also the steel plant, which, you know, I know is owned by one entity, but it seems there's some opportunity there, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I only have one comment, and it's the one that I made at SCAG, Scaggett Council and Governments. I don't understand why we're moving forward with all of this, when actually the population is decreasing. It's not increasing. So, you know, a few years from now, and really not that far ahead, we're gonna have to be reevaluating a lot of what we're looking at right now. And, it seems almost a shame that we're being told to do something that isn't even valid anymore, given the way the population is going. And, so, I just think it's a sad commentary on what's happening here within the state of Washington.
It is really interesting, yeah, yeah. I was looking at your, your population rate. It went down, you know, decreasing, and then we've had to kind of tweak numbers to get it to one percent. And so, it'll be interesting, once you reevaluate in five years, to see where you are on things. And, that will be an opportunity to look at, at some of your policies at that time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, my concern, though, is that there'll be changes that'll be put into place that might be irreversible at that point, or terribly expensive to reverse, and I think we're all just wanting to be able to build a community that's healthy and thoughtful, and one that we enjoy living in, so.
Yeah. And I have to say, just, it was really interesting and fun to listen to the previous presentations, and the amount of work that has occurred in this community to help people from all income levels, from all walks of life, is, is really impressive. I wish we had similar, something similar to North Star in Island County, because they could use it there, too, but.
We've been called a unicorn, because there isn't anything like it.
Right, yeah.
Western part of the states, so.
It's really impressive, yeah. Any other thoughts?
If I could just jump in real quick. So, what we're working on right now is a schedule to get the different chapters or elements of the comp plan presented to you, and to the planning commission, and then get feedback from you, back, back to the planning commission, and from the planning commission back to you. And I'm hoping to wrap up that schedule tomorrow. It's likely to change as we get more into it, or as we find that we need to review some chapter again, just to make sure it's where we want it to be. So, what I'll send out tomorrow is what we have so far. Some of these, we do have time to, to do a two-touch review on them. Some others, we may not have time, or maybe it's not necessary to do so, some of them are pretty straightforward. Anyway, we'll know more about that as we go through, and find out what you would like to look at, too. So, and, in the meantime, if you could, please take a look, go through, I know it's a lot. But, if you can go through, and just with your red pen, mark up what you like, don't like about the different policies that we're proposing, and, and we ask that you do that for each of our chapters. So, I know it's a lot of homework, but it's, it's a temporary pain, until we get it all done. So, appreciate that, thank you.
Tom, there's one more thing I wanted to add. We have a deadline of June thirtieth for the funding, but it doesn't mean that all the chapters need to be finalized by then. As long as we provide to the state that there's effort being done on each element, and there's at least a draft version, you'll be in pretty good shape. This is the same, every other jurisdiction is, is in the same boat, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being so gracious, hearing us out, listening to us, that's, it's greatly appreciated.
No, thank, thank you all for your thoughtful comments, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. All right, and the last item under new businesses is the development agreement, Beatty Square. This is a first read. Nicole?
Okay. Good evening, Ma, Madam Mayor and the council. So, the RJ Group, developers of Beatty Square, the five-story mixed-use project that's proposed at ten-ten Hodgins Street, for those who are wondering. Are, they're requesting approval to install an underground stormwater quality vault within the Stendal Street right-of-way, just to the northeast, directly northeast of the project site. These off-site improvements require a development agreement approved by a city council. You'll see in the development agreement that was included in your packet, in that draft, exhibits B and C of that draft, show the location of the proposed vault. This vault will replace an open-by-retention ditch that currently serves both the adjacent street right-of-way, as well as the existing five-story mixed-use development to the southeast, known as the depot. This ditch is currently maintained by the city, and it lacks proper drainage, and is prone to collecting litter. This new system that RJ Group has proposed will improve the stormwater treatment for both the right-of-way and adjacent properties, and reduce maintenance issues for the city. Additionally, the developer has also agreed to enhance the area by building a landscape public plaza over the vault, creating a pedestrian link to the Janneke Playfields to the north. They'll also install about three hundred linear feet of sidewalk, curb, and stormwater infrastructure along the north side of Stendal Street. Once completed, the city would take over maintenance of all of these improvements. Maintenance of the vault is simple, it's not time-consuming, and it doesn't require expensive consumables, just the occasional replacement of a filter. And the plaza has also been designed to accommodate and withstand the weight of a VAC truck for maintenance, so that way, if a VAC truck is needed for vault maintenance, it will be out of the street, away from passing vehicles. This agreement allows us to improve public infrastructure at minimal cost to the city, while supporting a quality mixed-use project that aligns with our comprehensive goal, comprehensive plan goals. If the council is prepared to take action on this item tonight, I'll welcome that. Staff recommends that city council approve the development agreement as written. With that, I'll open the floor for any questions. I'll make note that our engineers are in the room tonight. If you have any stormwater quality vault-specific questions, I might lean on them for their expertise.
Any questions at this time? Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do like the idea of having a vault versus a lid system, which is basically kind of what they got there right now, right? With a ditch, a low-impact development, the lid, for people who don't know. We, you know, I think it's in the, it is in the comprehensive plan, because I went around with David on that, about saying that you need to do a lid when you start off. And, and I like the idea of having that stormwater maintained differently, because I don't think lids are very effective, or, because they have to be maintained. And so, HOAs, or in this case, these places like the city right now is maintaining the lid. So, having that vault, that's, that's a great asset for us. Um, so having that vault, that's, that's a great asset for us, um, to be able to, to service that. A question not quite related to this, but kinda re, out there though, is there is a lot of lids out in our communities that we necessarily don't maintain, um, but we charge an impact fee for, for the stormwater in that case. Do we, like, in this case, there's, there will be a vault, would that impact fee still be there for, for that? Or are they just, that's part of the impact fee?
Sir, the, um, so the stormwater, that covers the whole system, so that is mainly our streets. So people, even if they're, have their own private system for their house, for example, you know, they, they still have stormwater from the streets that, that we need to maintain.
Okay. So that, even though they're putting it in, it's not um, different than the impact fee for the building of the, the, I think there's a stormwater impact fee for building, correct?
Uh, no, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Not for their private systems.
Okay.
Do you have a question, Councilman?
Uh, I'd, so, just to ask his question in a different way. So we have, we have all kinds of different impact fees, right? We have, we have sewer, we have, we have park impact fees, we have, I mean, you name it, right? We have a lot, but stormwater is not one of them.
If I could segue into that.
Yep.
Kyle, come up.
Thank you, everybody, I'm Kyle Anderson, I'm the Assistant City Engineer. Uh, we intend to slightly discuss that topic of why there are no stormwater impact fees at this time as we present the stormwater portion of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
That, that's someone coming up next.
The information.
He has it under information, and it's quite lengthy, and it's very good, by the way.
Yeah, I did, I did go through that, it was very lengthy and very good.
Yeah, thank you to our team.
For taking the time.
So um, so we'll cover that later. Um, and so I, I did read through quite a bit of, um, wrong, wrong tab. Through, through quite a bit of this, um, and, you know, a vault compared to a lid, love it. Um, it's not gonna cost us, as a city, one red cent. The developer's putting it in, and they're asking to be able to put it in because of the um, right-of-way issue. And that's kinda where we're at.
Right, typically, stormwater infrastructure should be provided on-site. This being in the right-of-way, granting permission to put their off-site improvements within the right-of-way required a development agreement to do so.
Okay.
So it's a win-win?
It's a win-win, it's already something that we maintain and spend a lot of man-hours and equipment already doing, it's not a very, uh, what were the words? It doesn't have positive drainage, I think that just means it's standing water in a ditch.
Uh, Councilman Burns?
Standing water with a lot of garbage in it most of the time.
With a lot of garbage, yes.
Because it seems to be the, the perfect spot to just catch it in that area. So I would definitely be in favor in putting this underground. But the question that leads me to is filtration. You said there's a filter that has to be replaced on that, uh, any anticipated cost?
It, it uses a, an engineered media filter that's, you know, subject to the current cost of the market at that time. But most of the time, you're replacing mulch over the top of that, it acts as a, a cheaper filter. And we're, we're happy to share those design, uh, details if you need to.
Sounds quite simplistic, though.
In, in theory, yes, it's a lot cheaper than getting a piece of equipment out to trim a pond down to, and then have other BNP's in place, so your soils don't leave the site. It should be a lot quicker, easier, um, probably less of an eyesore as well.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, Councilman.
Can you clarify what specific project it was? Because earlier today, there were two to three different projects that were brought up. Um, is this for one specific project, or is this trying to be the, the first stormwater for all of the projects combined? And if, if that's the case, is that making the city liable if, if one project is not approved before or after the other, or just is not at all?
So... Specifically, under this development agreement, the vault is, it will be serving Beatty Square. The ditch currently collects drainage from the depot and the Stendal Street right-of-way. So it, it is tackling right-of-way as well as adjacent development there. We heard earlier about the 68 townhomes that may be coming in at the west side under a separate permit. Um, and I believe that is going to be treated on-site, completely separate from this. So I think Beatty Square will be the last of the developments that would be using this stormwater vault.
And is Beatty Square specifically the mixed-use? Or is this the cottages that was mentioned but not permitted? And I'm quite honestly not exactly sure of how that's properly zoned yet.
Yes, Beatty Square is the 138 residential units above the daycare commercial space.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I was just gonna make a motion if I already had anything to say on it. I'll make a motion to approve, um, moving to a, um, hold on one second, sorry. Moving to the Bay Square Agreement, Development Agreement.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, second by Councilman Henderson. And uh, this would, this proposed development agreement is for Beatty Square. It's a mixed-use development, and with council's approval, with the action, um, with the meeting tonight, it would provide um, direction for the staff and for any revisions or further consideration to happen. Or do you want me just to say that we're approving the vault drainage system?
I like the second option better.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. 9:35, we do have executive session, um, I'm not quite sure how long we'll need, um...
Johnson, my suggestion is 10 minutes for the executive session. Also, the city attorneys pointed out to me that, uh, when we go beyond nine o'clock, uh, that we, in the council rules, we, we need to extend the meeting and pick an end time. So we should probably do that before exec session.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to extend the meeting and pick an end time of no later than 10:15 PM.
I'll second that motion.
In the opposition to it?
Madam Mayor, I did have one question on the informational for the stormwater. Um, and it was for the impact fees that are on houses, on developments that have lids. And I was wondering if maybe we can get just a clarity on that. Um, right now, we have, not impact fees, but we do a stormwater fee in the billing statement for houses. Um, and even though there's a lid through the HOA that they have to maintain and develop, it seems that they're still paying a stormwater fee. Um, the, I, I thought the idea from the stormwater fee was to maintain a stormwater facility and help with the stormwater runoff. Um, can you help explain why there's a fee in, in an LED area?
Yeah, you know, each homeowner association will have some way that they're supposed to treat their water on-site. Above and beyond that, I, I kinda look at our stormwater fees in the, in the city as almost like buying into an insurance pool, where, you know, we still need these things. Businesses need to run, we need to deal with stormwater. So you're part of a collective that buys in above and beyond that HOA agreement or whatever you may be having, that you'll have your HOA fees that would cover the maintenance costs of your private development, uh, in theory. Um, and we do have several public facilities as well that we maintain ourselves and inspect and keep, uh, that is part of that system too.
Thank you, uh, yeah, when I, when this first came out, like, we were pushing primary LEDs. I thought the intent was to incentivize using LEDs over just a stormwater vault or stormwater drain system. Um, and then that would be compensated, but I have talked, and I've talked to developers, say, yeah, it's not a problem. The LED is not a problem at all. But then HOAs that say, yeah, we're not maintaining it, and it's becoming a problem.
Yeah, we have a regular enforcement effort to where those get inspected internally on our end, and we work with those associations or private groups that need to maintain that. Uh, through notice is how we start it off first and then proceed from there.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, so it is 9:38, and we are going to be in executive session for approximately 10 minutes. We'll be back at 9:48. I did, and I said with the, with the opposition, the opposition. I got this for us, everyone, hold out their hands.
No, thank you.
Yeah. Tell him.
Oh, tattooed. What's her surname? I saw his name come up. Oh, I was doing.
Wanted to, uh, create some wiring. Yeah. Our company. He has paperwork, oh, no, transform, because it's overloaded. Why is he having to pay for it? That's what they call it. Yes. It's, it's four-liter. They have three phase right there. It goes over, styles building, and then it goes over to the other building, we're not even using it. They can take that, lose the pitch. These are buildings on it, and one can, or two can. It's always, I, I, these buildings go through one hole, it's fine. It's scary. One, one big transformer.
I was literally, I was watching, I was washing my dishes in my kitchen.
That's my, that's my tree keep, yeah.
Ah, yeah, that was crazy, I was literally just happy to be looking out my window at the moment. Freaking, like, purple and yellow, sparks, and like, oh my God, what was that?
I was always gonna go to the traffic in, whatever. People are not gonna walk in town. There's only three months before you can walk to walk in town.
Yeah.
We're not Florida.
No, we're out here on an island, it's a land.
Florida, you might as well walk.
No, it's a land, it's true. I don't know what else to call it. It's a land island, everything is so perfect. Well, you should bring a, you should bring a.
Well, it was a, uh, Safeway, I think Safeway here, I was in Seattle, living in this, working in this huge mansion house. It was dentists, and I, I was next door to this guy, and we had this park, it was huge, and it was all in the yard. Um, and uh, I had to clean that up. And I, uh, talked to him, I said, okay, guess we're living in it. I go around and I purchase properties for Safeway and build new Safeways. So Luigi, one of the, they were gonna do it.
I remember.
And I'm thinking that, because I told him we would now.
Where the depot is now, that big, that store.
Is that what they call it?
That's what they call it, depot.
That was right, right there. Well, it's forever, it's all, uh, I apologize. Well, Safeway, they put drainage and everything in, they were gonna build it, and the city's, uh, impact fees were too much. They, they did that to several businesses around, if you wanna come in. Run out, run down there.
Listen, here's one, I've got one done, him.
They were gonna talk, is that reasonable?
What's, what's, what's the story? What's the story like?
Well, it used to be cash and carry, it's not one. It's like, you can't have a whole place. Well, we've always been to come in, right there, uh, for, uh, social security is across the street there, that big area. They were gonna put in, on there, like, they, they backed out.
I, I try to keep it in town, you know, I'm like, maybe.
All it's cost, okay, it's big.
Maybe if I help them out, the local shopping thing.
They took seating away, a bunch of seating. Little bit, little bit, they took all the seating, a bunch of it, they made, they, they made it so. They got everybody out of an aisle way, where they're going through, so they just go in there. Windows and, you go in this, and that's from seating, and all that was, you might have seen my daughter. Hawaii, and they had all that stuff outside. They had a doorway and all the tables outside. Probably could add on, you know, could add on out there. Clean more, and then they, they pull the sausage, the hot dog, you know, they take something else, they do. Yeah, they eat, uh, all the stuff. Oh, it's a pretty, yeah. They took that away, it's like, I'm paying the same amount, you can't even, but you're taking stuff off, you know, they're a little crazy type of, you know.
I've heard of this, like it's only. These are great, but people getting. Got a lot of people that's.
They yell, they can hear all over, they're themselves.
Okay, it is 9:50 PM and we are back. I think we have concluded, there was, there were, nothing settled within the executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, everybody, thank you, have a good night.
All opposed?